Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 10, 2018 Village Board meeting. I'd like to lead off with a pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One of the items on the agenda tonight was a public hearing for our 2018-2019 budget. So it was advertised at 7:00. So I would like to open up the meeting stating that we are going to have -- we are opening up the public hearing for the 2018-2019 budget. We are going to take care of some business ahead of that because we have some people who have other agendas and need to get out quickly, but we will definitely then get into our public for the budget. So the first on the agenda is --
Motion.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we open up the public hearing for the budget.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? It's okay. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is, I want to get back to address the POW MIA flag that we discussed at the last meeting. And I am going to lead off with a little bit, but I have invited the commander of the American Legion, Mr. Denny McGuire, to come and give us an update in terms of their recommendation. But I'll lead off with, in case everybody hadn't seen or heard the post, on March 28, I organized a meeting with Commander of the American Legion, Mr. Denny McGuire, and also the Patrick Chapman Post Veterans of Foreign Wars, Commander Gary Rome, along with Trustee Trout and Village Clerk Pat Coon. It was a -- it was, I'm going to put this in my words, it was a very productive meeting because at that meeting, we discussed a series of items that we were going to address tonight. And one of those was the flying of the POW MIA flag out of our municipal building here at Village Hall. So part of that recommendation is that we wanted the commander of the Legion to come forward and give us, at this meeting, their recommendation for that. Also discussed was, at my request, was, as you'll see in further on discussion, that we have a formal presentation of the flag because that's part of the official part of having a POW MIA flag presented to an organization. And then I also suggested that we form a veterans committee that would consist of veterans to work on addressing other issues that we could take forward in 2018-2019 for addressing all veterans that are living and served here in Rhinebeck. So I think that's very important, and I'm very anxious to get into that. At our meeting that, on the, on March 28, we decided that we would commence that meeting after the Memorial Day activities. And it'll be a five-member team, and we'll come up with recommendations and present them to the board and then go forward with that. So with that, I'd like to invite the Commander of the American Legion, Post 429, to make the recommendation to us for the flag.
Good evening. I'm Dennis McGuire, Commander, Post 429, at Rhinebeck, right down the street on the corner. We met with Mayor after we had the town meeting. Gary Rome and myself, Mr. Trout. We came up with, which is written, "In observance of those missing in action, MIA, or have been incarcerated as prisoners of war, we will fly the MIA and the POW flag on the Village Municipal Building located at 86 East Market Street and all war memorials continuously whenever the American flag is flown." This was written by the village. It's going to be voted on tonight. We also, we have, every Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, we have a memorial service at the Revolutionary Cemetery next door. That's basically around 11:00. We would then bring the color guard and the firing squad over here to present the village with a POW MIA flag, and it would be a new one, and it would be posted by our Legion members of color guard. We would also, we're going to have the town involved in that and have a new one put up over there. We appreciate our POW flag going back up again. We figured with the weather, of course, we're hoping that we'll get some sunshine by Memorial Day. So we're going to present the village and the town with brand-new flags. I purchased the flags, and we'll get them up. We have, it will stipulate under here also the New York State Executive Law 403, Article 19, which covers the flag being flown with the American flag. There is still questions of who and why from the post members, community, phone calls, my phone is still ringing, but we've taken the right step here. And we appreciate that you have passed the meeting, that you're going to pass this this evening. And I think if we learn from a situation like this, that's the main thing. We're never too old to learn, and I'm the first one to admit that. So again, thank you and for bringing this up.
Just one point.
Thank you.
Well, it's supposed to be 76 East Market, not 86 East Market.
Yeah, we can fix that.
Okay.
We can fix that. That's fine.
76 East Market.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that, I would like to read the resolution that I wrote.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, we're not --
I said, Mr. Mayor, can I address the board on this subject?
We're holding public comment section a little bit further down. If you can wait to the public comment section, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to read into the record the resolution, the policy for the flying of POW MIA flag that was written and shared with the board. Whereas in 1971, there's a little bit of history here, so bear with me. Whereas in 1971, Ms. Michael Hoff, the wife of a U.S. military officer listed as missing in act, US, a wife of a U.S. military officer listed as missing in action during the Vietnam War, developed the idea for the national flag to remind every American of the U.S. servicemembers whose fates were never accounted for during the war. And whereas, on August 10, 1990, Congress passed the U.S. Public Law 101-355, designating the POW MIA flag as a symbol of our nation's concern and commitment to resolve as fully as possible the fates of Americans still prisoner, missing, or unaccounted for in Southeast Asia. And whereas, Congress designated the 3rd Friday of September as National POW MIA Recognition Day and ordered prominent display of the POW MIA flag on that day. And whereas now the state of New York, the POW flag is displayed over all state buildings and facilities on Memorial Day, POW Remembrance Day, and Veterans Day, and the flag should be displayed beneath the American flag if there is no third staff available. And whereas, New York Executive Law 403-A, every county outside the city of New York City, outside the city of New York, city, town, and village, is encouraged to display the prisoner of war and missing in action flag at the building housing its local legislative body on all days in which the flag of the United States of America is displayed. Every county outside the city of New York and every city, town, and village shall fly the official National League of Families POW MIA flag as designated by 36 USC 902 at the building housing its local legislative body if a congressionally chartered veterans organization, including any post, chapter, detachment unit, auxiliary unit, or society of such veterans organization, has provided, has provided the county, the city, the town, or village with such flag. And upon such municipalities' request, any necessary attachments or fasteners required to enable the flag to be visible to the public on the following days: Armed Forces Day, the 3rd Saturday in May; Memorial Day, the last Monday in May; Flag Day, the 2nd Sunday in June; Independence Day, July 4; National POW MIA Recognition Day, the 3rd Friday in September, except if such date of commemoration cannot be observed due to a religious holiday. Such observances shall then be conducted on the 2nd Friday in September and Veterans Day, November 11. And whereas there are thousands of American servicemen who have been classified as missing in action or have been incarcerated as prisoners of war in the various wars of the 20th century in which the United States has participated, and where, and whereas many thousands of these POW MIA's have not yet returned to the United States, nor has their fate been determined and disclosed, and whereas the American Legion desires to properly acknowledge the sacrifices of the POW MIA's and keep this unresolved issue before the American people, now, therefore be it resolved by the Village of Rhinebeck in a regular meeting on April 10, 2018, in observance of those missing in action, MIA, or have been incarcerated as prisoners of war, POW, will fly the MIA POW flag on the Village Municipal Building located at 86 East Market Street and at all war memorials continuously wherever the American flag is flown. I'd like to make a motion to adopt this policy.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Again, this says 86 East Market. It's supposed to be 76 East Market.
I made the same mistake. Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, County Legislature Joel Tyner.
I shouldn't say this, but I will. It's like a concert in here tonight. I need you to take one of those and pass it on. And here's a show and tell. So this show and tell, I was in, I was in Portland, Oregon. I guess you're supposed to say Oregon, to the Oregon. I grew up learning Oregon. But with my wife in December, and there were posters like these, or they weren't as pretty as these, all over in stores and restaurants. And it was actually white letters on a green background. So in December, I sent an email out to my list. I took a picture. It was in Voodoo Donut in Portland. And I was like, why can't we get these all over Duchess County? It says, "We welcome all races and ethnicities, all religions, all countries of origin, all gender identities, all sexual orientations, all abilities and disabilities, all spoken languages, all ages, everyone. We stand here with you. You are safe here." I'll just give you one example. There are plenty of immigrant families, documented and undocumented, that are living still in fear and terror, right here in Duchess County because of what's happened. The Church of the Messiah, right here in the Village of Rhinebeck, there are families who used to go to the food pantry to get food who don't go anymore because they're afraid of immigration customs and enforcement. So I sent this email out in December, and there's a woman named Kate Vikström who I've never even met, but she's a graphic designer, graphic artist extraordinaire, and she created this, which is a lot nicer looking. And so these are starting to go up all over Duchess County. There's one up at the Table Talk Diner in Poughkeepsie on Route 9. There's one up at the Shelter World General Store. They're going up in Columbia County. And pretty soon, I'm willing to bet that quite a few establishments, I would bet any amount of money, here in Rhinebeck in the village, would gladly take these, judging by the other signs they've taken from it. So I'm going to give this to you. I'm going to ask you to think about it. You don't have to, no pressure, if you want to put that up somewhere here in the village because it kind of sends a nice message to everybody. And I'm not just bugging you guys, I'm bugging everybody I know about this. My day job working at Hudson High School up in Columbia County, they're going up there too. Something that I got passed back in September 2009, I was the Environmental Committee Chair in the county legislature, the halcyon golden days of yore, back in '08 and '09, I got 30 resolutions passed. The former county executive basically wouldn't allow any of them to be implemented. One of those 30 resolutions I got passed was for Duchess County to be a DEC climate smart community, which really makes it easier for Duchess County to access grants. Well, last May, I got a resolution passed for Duchess County to wean itself away a little bit from fossil fuels. As a result of that, the Duchess County Environmental Management Council was tasked with the chore of, how could we do that? How could we get away from fossil fuels a little bit? Their prime recommendation, their top recommendation, Duchess County should be a DEC climate smart community. So this is kind of weird and wacky, but a few days ago, the resolution that I got passed overwhelmingly in September 2009 finally got sent to Albany, and now officially Duchess County is a DEC climate smart community. And so hopefully, pretty soon, we're going to be a nice sort of energy smart community. That's the next step, working with Rebecca Edwards and the Republicans and the Democrats on that. Mayor Bassett, I just sent you an email. Should have sent you this before, but I didn't really have an email version of the letter. Believe it or not, there's some stuff that we all agree on. Last night, all 25 of us signed onto a letter about the new capacity zone, the GJ zone. Basically, the New York Independent System Operator, and there's only a few days left to weigh in on this, but if you go to NYISO.com, and this is again an issue I've been working on for many months on, the New York Independent System Operator, they have proposed to not have the electricity rate so high here in this area. Wouldn't that be nice? And they have proposed that our electric bills through Central Hudson no longer subsidize the profits of companies like Cricket Valley. And by the way, Cricket Valley is being paid for by TEPCO, in part, the Tokyo Electric Power Company. Anybody ever at Fukushima? Yeah. So we're talking 500 tons of volatile organic chemicals and nitrogen oxides and other particular matters coming out of that plant when it fires up in a couple of years. Well, the thing about, the wonderful thing about all 25 of us signing onto this letter that I've been working on for months now last night to send a message to the New York Independent System Operator, say, please, keep on doing what you're doing, try to bring the rate down. The beautiful thing about that is when the electric rates aren't so high, the money dries up for the nasty, polluting, unneeded power plant. And I know there are elected officials before I even got into office here in Rhinebeck who are concerned about St. Lawrence Cement. St. Lawrence Cement was a walk-in-the-park compared to the Cricket Valley pollution. So I just thought I'd end. If you're an elected official, if you're anybody in this room, please go to NYISO.com and you can call me at 464-224-58762488 to learn more about that. The flyer I passed out, and I'll hand out to you folks if you're interested, the Chatham Police Chief, I may have brought this up a month ago. It's not every day that I get somebody like this to come speak at one of my forums. This guy's name is Peter Volkman. There's been Albany Times Union articles written about him. This man has seen at least 170 heroin addicts, opiate addicts, even from Red Hook, from all over the Hudson Valley. Do you know why they drive to Chatham and why they call the Chatham Police Department? Because they don't get arrested for being a nonviolent drug addict. The Chatham Police comes out and they pick up drug addicts with their, with their heroin, with their opiates, and they get them treatment instead of forcing us to pay to lock them up for nonviolent drug addiction. If you're a drug dealer, lock them up, but ever throw away the key for a while. If you're being aggressive or violent, you do the crime, you do the time. If you're a nonviolent drug addict, you should be in drug treatment. And it's a huge problem. It's a huge problem. So on May 5, he's actually coming down to Poughkeepsie, the Family Partnership Center Cafeteria, a forum I'm hosting. He's speaking there at noon that day, the very same day he's going to be here. And I've already talked to Sergeant Pete Dunn about this. He kind of seems interested. He's either going to be at Rhinebeck Town Hall with me, or Sergeant Dunn's going to send a representative. But that's Saturday, May 5, at 3:00 p.m. at Rhinebeck Town Hall. Don't miss that. And that's the Police-Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative, PAARUSA.org. We're doing our 23rd Repair Cafe. You get your broken stuff fixed for free, including jewelry, clothing, you name it, electrical appliances, welding, licensed massage therapy. That's going to be Saturday, April 28, noon to 4:00 p.m. at Rhinebeck Town Hall. And the other thing I was going to say was on Thursday, April 19, at 7:00 p.m., I'm just doing my regular public forum. One of the main things talking about is these new economy initiatives. Last night, was it Chris Mung from Red Hook, Giancarlo Laverias, Randy Johnson, Nick Page signed onto a letter to create a public bank for Duchess County. And about a year and a half ago, I spoke with Heidi Seelbach, who's the Duchess County Finance Commissioner. She seemed to think there would actually be some benefits to this. There are a lot of places across the country that are looking into this. It would save a lot of money if we're, you know, for instance, the $274 million jail expansion, the bonds over the next 30 years. Imagine paying a lot less than that with a public bank. If you go to publicbankinginstitute.org, the guy who founded that is the former chair of the Pennsylvania State Republican Committee, Michael Kraus. The only other thing I'll mention is that last night also, Chris Mung from Red Hook, Francina Amparo, Giancarlo Laverias, Randy Johnson, they signed a letter I circulated about PFOA. I did a big press conference last October because I found out about PFOA, PFOS contamination at the Creek Road Fire Training Facility by Duchess, by Duchess Community College and at the Duchess County Airport. I sent letters to the current county government administration, totally ignored because I wanted information because ProPublica had done a big report on this in May of last year. If you click on that article, click on the map, that popped up. Well, we just found out this past Thursday that very serious PFOA contamination was found at the Duchess County Airport. Unfortunately, New Jersey, under Chris Christie last November, they passed a law for the water standard to be down to 14 parts per trillion. The rest of the country, Vermont's a little bit better, not just quite as bad, but here in New York State, it's just EPA recommended 70 parts per trillion. So there's an article in Northern Duchess News that just came out today. Chris Mung, Francina Amparo, Giancarlo Laverias, and Randy Johnson signed onto my letter saying, we here in New York State, because the Duchess County Department of Health is going out and doing the testing, behavior in community health, and they're saying, go by the EPA guidelines, we should be going by, God help us all, the Chris Christie guidelines. Chris Christie actually did things right. Sorry, I talked a little bit too long. Thank you for doing the right thing on the flag stuff. I'm at 876-2488.
Thank you, George. I do want to take care. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do you have, can we make a comment on this, Mayor?
Well, our public comment session is coming up real soon. I want to take care of all the presentations first, if you don't mind, Mr. McGuire.
Yes, sir.
And we also have the public hearing, which was announced to be opened at 7:00. So appreciate your patience. And I know you have a meeting, so if Lester's, I, we said, we put you up front because you had a meeting to go to, Mr. McGuire, so.
Well, I'm sure everybody else is just busy trying, but I.
Come on up.
Yes?
Yeah, come on up because I know you have to go to a meeting. That's why we put you up front.
Well, I was listening. I'm kind of confused about this poster here that you can be safe in Rhinebeck. I did 20 years in state police here in Rhinebeck. We have Duchess County sheriffs in Rhinebeck. We have the village police in Rhinebeck. And we try to make everybody safe here. We make everybody welcome. If you break the laws, you should be arrested. There should be, if this is heading towards a sanctuary village or town, which I just thought I heard, why are we going to support breaking the law? If you come into this country illegally, you broke the law to start with, right from the beginning. My parents came here and sat in Ellis Island for two weeks. One of my aunts were kept down there for a week. She had a little mark on her lip here. She was a little carried-on baby. They had to speak English. They had to have a place to live. They had, they had to make money. They did it legally. So if you break the laws in Rhinebeck in a village or in the town, you should be arrested. If I break the laws in Rhinebeck, I should be arrested. And the laws are also the immigration laws. Which I understand was free drug treatment for self-inflicted wounds. You decide to go out and do drugs. Why do I have to work four jobs while I'm retired? Or you people work your jobs to pay for free drug, what is it? Drug rehabilitation for people who are self-inflicted? Who's going to pay for that? It's not free. That is not free. Again, Mr. Mayor, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I really need to get, I thank you, Mr. McGuire, because I know you had to leave. So the next on the agenda, I want to get our presentations out of the way before we go into a public hearing. So the order is, I really want to get Mr. Jeffrey Anzambino from Seneck Hudson to come up and talk about what's happening with the Amtrak and the proposed gate/fencing that came out last month.
Thank you, Mayor Bassett, and thank you, members of the board of trustees, for asking me to come tonight to brief you on this matter. Amtrak is looking to build gates and fences at various locations along the Empire Corridor between Rhine Cliff and Stuyvesant Landing. The two that are, I think, most concerned to the village here are the ones down by the village water treatment plant. And then there's also some gates proposed down at the south end of the Rhine Cliff train station parking lot, actually in the town, both close enough, but one that affects your water treatment plant, I think is perhaps of greatest interest to you. Seneck Hudson, Riverkeeper, many municipalities up and down the river, every, there was a sign-on letter by every town in Columbia County that has asked for an extension of the comment period and public meetings in each affected community so people can understand the implications of these gates and fences. We haven't yet heard if there would be some public meetings. The comment period has been extended from the end of March to May 1, and that's good. But people are still looking to have meetings in their communities so that they can understand exactly what's proposed. And I don't know the extent to which you've seen the materials on the New York State website, but it's a little bit confusing to me. If you would like, I can just describe what my take on it.
Yes, please, because I'm sure there's interested people.
At the Rhine Cliff, or the Village of Rhinebeck Water Treatment Plant, the note on the aerial photo with some, it's a very poor quality aerial photo. There are a couple of arrows and some notations, and it says, "Need gates on north and south of crossing." So I don't, as far as I know, I don't think there's a great crossing there at that location. They do, so it's a little bit confusing exactly where they propose to do it, and I think you'll want to make sure you can always have access to your water treatment plant easily. The other thing that you may be interested in is I know that a lot of people for years, especially during strike bass season, do drive along the railroad tracks to their favorite fishing spots. Technically, this is railroad property. CSX owns the property. Amtrak leases it. Technically, they are trespassing there. People have been doing it for many years. The railroad did cut off access about 150 years ago, so there are very few places that people can access the river, and people really are hungry to do so. The reason we, Seneck Hudson, the village, the people of New York have a crack at this is because this federal action by Amtrak, Amtrak is a federal agency, must be consistent with New York State's coastal policies. And one of those coastal policies says there shouldn't be a reduction in public access. So there are locations in other communities where fences are proposed that are really cutting off the access, such as in Germantown. But this is the kind of the state of affairs and how it might affect the village and village residents. There are, Seneck Hudson's website has a lot of information on the homepage. There's also a great website up that's been done by the town of Germantown, which I believe is perhaps the most affected, and that's Gate, GatesGate.org. And they have collected all the letters that have been sent. Assemblymember DeeDee Barrett has sent letters. The county executive here in Duchess County has sent a letter. Scores and scores of letters have been sent in. You should also know that on April 22, the town of Germantown is going to have a rally at Lasher Park to express people's interest in keeping access to the river and the Village of Castleton, which unfortunately has already had their access cut off. They had municipal parkland that was cut off by a fence that the Department of Transportation had erected. So now they have no access to their municipal waterfront. So they're also having a rally there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or give you my contact information if someone should have a question later in the week.
So the first, just to be clear, there's gates, but no fencing?
Not in Rhine, in Rhine Cliff. The two locations in Rhine Cliff, there are only gates. There are the gates, the gates that I described at the water treatment plant, which is a little bit confusing because it says, "Need gates, need gates on north and south of crossing." I'm quoting that. It's not really good English. I'm not quite sure what they're trying to say. There is no crossing. At the south end of the train station parking lot, one reference says "gate," the other reference says "gates." So I'm not sure exactly what. So I'm not sure exactly what they're proposing at the south end of the train station. One of the reasons people want meetings in their municipalities is to get some clarity from Amtrak about exactly where the locations are, what will the gates look like, will the fire departments get keys? Will it block, will some of the fences block views from the land side of the railroad tracks? So there are many questions that people have that really have not been answered.
So you brought up my concern, not only from fishermen, but for emergency access vehicles that need to get, to respond to incidents on the river. How can we go about trying to get a meeting here for all, not just the village, but village and town together? Because I'm sure we all have the same concern.
Yes.
If somebody can hear and adjust the issues, or somebody we can have, make comment to.
Yes. The first thing that I would recommend would be to write to the New York State Department of State that's on the public notice that perhaps you have, that's, I think, the first thing that needs to happen. There's also an address, it's very hard to read, but I can give you the exact address from a person at Amtrak. And I think that letters to Amtrak would also be helpful as well at this time. And I agree with you. I think that one meeting that would cover Rhinebeck and the village and town of Rhinebeck, also Mayor Joel Griffith up in Tivoli, has requested a meeting for his municipality as well.
All right. So let's, yes, I'd like to, any other questions for the board?
We had a regional meeting that would be good, you know, I mean...
You mentioned a public. Where can people make public comments? Or how do they go about, if somebody's interested, how do you go about making a comment?
There is an email address and a mailing address on the public notice. I don't have that address with me here tonight, but I believe that's the public notice. I thought I saw someone with the public notice there. It is on there, and I'd be happy to email it to anyone. I believe I emailed it to you, Mayor Bassett.
I did.
I was just thinking for the public, yeah, for the public.
Yeah, it's also on Sinek Hudson's website, sinekutsen.org. It's right on our homepage.
So I think this is something we could post for people to respond to on all our media sites.
I think it'd be a great idea.
Jeff, I just ask you, you referenced the letter, there have been letters written, including the one from County Executive Marcus Duio, who, it's almost three weeks ago, reaching out to the very sources that you're suggesting, looking for a meeting. Any sense of response to the...
There has been no response. They're not, well, I don't, I haven't spoken to the county executive about it, so I don't know whether he's been responded to, but I know that Sinek Hudson and Riverkeeper has not been responded to, town of Germantown has not been responded to, and I have not heard that anybody's been responded to.
Okay.
So we want to give people a voice in this matter, and we would hope that any village residents that care about riverfront access, that you as village board trustees would be concerned about, knowing the details, would also weigh in as well.
This is why we invited you.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
And Sinek Hudson appreciates that, too.
Yes. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Jeff? Well, Jeff has the floor. Is any questions for Jeff that we could address because on the gate access? Very good. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
All right. Next on the agenda is our 2018-2019 public hearing. And I would like to turn this over to our treasurer now to, you know, summarize our budget, and then open, and then we will open up the comment section for the public hearing.
Okay. First, I would like to thank the mayor, the trustees, and all the department heads for all of their meetings and work on this 1819 budget. For the general fund, the appropriations presented in the proposed budget total $2,415,334. Revenues in the amount of $708,592. And that leaves the tax levy at $1,634,742. We had, our village assessment is $391,597,000. So our tax rate would be the same tax rate as it was last year at $4.17 per thousand assessed value. Also, to, to be presented is the, to be approved is the water budget at $993,549, and the sewer budget at $811,836. Do you have any questions over the calculation or the budget?
Any questions on the budget before we open for public comment?
Okay. Just real fast, the 417, which represents no change in the tax levy from last year, when our residents receive their statement of village taxes, there's a little section that says percent change in levy from previous year. We would expect to see a zero there. Is that correct?
Well, the, the tax rate itself has not changed. The levy has gone up because of the assessed valuation of the entire village. So the assessed value that we received from the county of the entire village is, that has gone up a little bit, and that combined with the increase in the tax cap and the additional revenue that we received from putting, from the cell tower, those are the three items that have allowed the tax rate to stay flat.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions on the budget?
No.
This time I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and open the public comment section on the budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? This time I'd like to open up the public comment section for, on, on the 2018-2019 Having heard no comments, I would like, oh, sorry, last-minute request.
My name's Joe Kirkroyd.
Good. I have a question. How much is allotted for the parking dilemma in Rhinebeck? What's in that fund?
That is a capital fund. It's not an operating maintenance fund annually. And in that parking fund is $41,000 to $41,000.
And how would we be able to find out what's been collected since 1986 in Lewa via parking, since it's diminished to $41,000?
I could go to the building department, which is the collecting source of it, and I can get...
I would be very interested in that.
I can get that for you.
Fantastic. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment section for the 2018-19 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, having heard the public hearing and closed the public comment session, at this time I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2018-2019 budget for the next fiscal year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carry the 2018-19 budget. Thank you, Board, for all your work and due diligence in putting that together. Next, I would like to go to open up the public comment section in general. So at this time, if anybody has any public comments, I would like them to come up to the microphone, identify themselves, and then make their comment.
I'm Paul Niederkorn, live at 132 East Market Street. I have a number of comments. To begin with the flag, I was under the impression that it was going to be a general flag policy. And also that the policy would be published beforehand so that the public would get to look at it before you passed a policy. Now, what you passed tonight was very specific with respect to just the POW flag, but how about other flags? I understand from various articles, et cetera, that some people were proposing to fly other flags. You didn't address that question at all. Do you intend to? Is there going to be a more general policy?
I'll, I'll address that while you're here, because we did not have any request to our board for any other flags. So we did not address that situation. We had a very specific address to flying the POW MIA.
Okay, was it the town board then that had other?
It was not our board.
Okay, it was not. So you do not intend to have a more general flag policy?
No, sir.
Okay. What if somebody does come in and wants some other flags flown? What are you going to do?
Well, I believe there's regulations that determine what flags can be flown on the flag staff, and they have to be congressionally approved.
Well, how about other flag poles? Just in general, what is the policy that the village has with respect to flags? And that was certainly my impression of what was going to happen, but apparently it hasn't.
It was not something we addressed, sir.
All right. The next comment I have is about the sign that Mr. Tyner handed out. I suggest that you review the actual zoning code for respect to signs, because it would seem to me having that sign plastered around town would be a violation of the zoning code in most instances, unless they brought it to the village board. Each person who wanted to display that sign had the village board okay the sign. And in general, there are many signs that come up in the village that really are in violation of code, and I would, in a way, recommend that the code be relaxed so that people who put slines and flyers in their windows and their stores are not in violation of law. I prefer to be able to live within the law rather than continually violating. Third thing I'd like to comment on is I understand from your newsletter that we're going to revisit the historic district and update the historic district. Could we have some comment about really what is the motivation for doing that?
I'll turn that over to Trustee Rossi in driving that effort.
Yes, sir. Well, I serve as the liaison to the planning and zoning boards, and the role of my, as a liaison, is to advocate back to the village board some of the desires and requirements that the planning zone, planning and zoning board field are in the best interest of the village. There have recently been some developers that have purchased property here in the village and have just torn down the home. And at least in one case, there was concern that that was a home that wouldn't meet current standards of historical distinction. At least 25, 35 years ago, a group of residents organized themselves and did develop a...
I'm aware of the historic district origins.
And we have over 350 properties that are, because of the national and state distinction, are protected, are insulated from someone just coming in and tearing it down, sharing information I know you're probably familiar with. The desire was, that was last done many years ago, and we have additional properties that would now follow by. And so we decided, the planning board, and in support of the village, in support of the village board, agreed that we should pursue this. We should look at a way of expanding the existing village historical district to be more inclusive, more streets, more homes.
Okay, so the major motivation is to expand it?
Yes, sir.
Do you know when it last was updated, the...
Oh, 25, 30 years ago.
No, it was updated in 2012. So it was a meeting here in 2013 where they presented the updated information about the historic district.
Well, that's when we, we passed the historic district preservation law, but it referred back to the map that's, it's in the, it's in the, it referred back to the map that's in the master plan, it's dated 1993.
Well, the data was updated in 2012 and 13. If you want to see...
I referenced to, I referenced to a master plan from 1993.
Of the, of the meeting that was held here, well, the results, well, Warren Smith was involved, Nancy Kelly was involved.
I, I know you're right that if you look at the zoning code, the last update doesn't...
Not the zoning code I'm talking about. I'm talking about the historic district document. They went around and they examined every property again that was in the village historic district and updated their book.
Yeah. I have heard conflicting...
I don't remember, it wasn't, I don't remember it that way, Paul. I honestly...
I certainly, I certainly researched that.
It, it was updated, but it went back to the previous map that was, as you said, 1993?
Yeah.
Well, maybe, but they updated all the data on it now. If you were talking about expanding it, that's a different story.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Melanie Fleischer-Mullinari. I'm glad we came to a positive conclusion on the flag. But I have a couple of questions. You were reading something, Mr. Bassett. Where did you get that information from?
I'm sorry, what are you referencing?
When you were talking about the flag and all the information you had that you read in the beginning.
The policy?
Yeah.
The policy I did offer research, yes.
From the internet or...
Multiple places, yes, but including the internet, yes.
Why didn't you do that in the first place?
We failed, we failed to identify some of those areas, and we admitted that.
Okay. Second of all, I still feel that you dropped the ball, and like Paul Niederkorn said, it was raised that something about maybe, forget my wording, if I use the wrong wording, about the gay lesbian flag being flown, or another flag or whatever, that was a concern some people were asking about. But we were also told, and you had said it was only one person that brought this whole situation up. My thing is, what are we going to do about it? How do we correct this? Who's going to be held accountable for this? I know you're saying you're sorry for jumping the gun, and now you're fixing it, but who's going to be held accountable for the wrongdoing from the beginning?
We made our correction.
Pardon me?
We admitted we were wrong, and we made a correction.
You made a correction with the flag. Are we going to help hold this one person accountable at all? Because they did come to you, the village board, right? And they also went to the town board. So are we going to do anything about this person? I mean...
No, no. The decision begins, the decision begins and rests with us. We made a bad, we made, we made a bad, we made a bad decision, which, which is obvious.
We've got a resolution, let's move on. We don't have to hold people accountable for mistakes.
Well, we should, because in the future, if something like this happens and one person walks in and says something...
Move on. Move on.
I, I think that the authority to make the decision rests with us, and we did, and we did a bad job on this. So I think you're seeing the public accountability. People came in here, made, you know, made it very clear that we, that we made a mistake, misunderstood sentiment, and we've responded. And I think as the responsible parties, that's, that's what we should do. I don't really know, we shouldn't go any further than that.
Well, I'm just kind of concerned that maybe in the future, if somebody walks in and says, "I don't like the color shirt you're wearing," that you're going to take it off because that one person said it. You know, that's what I'm afraid of. I just hope this kind of stuff doesn't happen.
As a deliberative group, we don't do, make decisions based upon doing a favor for one person or to punish one person. If there, if a referral comes in, or wherever it came from, if it came from the ether, we tried to decide, we use reasoning skills, and we use deliberation, and we use our judgment, and we made a mistake. The buck stops here. We screwed up, and we apologized repeatedly for it.
And most of us appreciate the fact that we take responsibility and help fix it.
When it's brought to your attention. Thank you.
And that's what we have to do, bring it to their attention. We have to be, we have to be vigilant. We don't go, we all know about our heads down, like we did. Don't we fix it when we do find out?
Public comment, any other public comment?
I didn't know people were allowed to talk from the...
We're, I'm trying, Joe, I'm trying, Joe, you're doing it now. So, Joe, I'm at my best. Nina, come over. If you have a public comment, please come forward and address it to the board.
Who is this gentleman here? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I have a letter that I've signed and 97 village residents of...
Could you put your name, please?
No, I'm sorry. Nina Lynch, 1 West Quirk. We, as residents of the village Rhinebeck, are seriously concerned about the potential change in the character of our village due to the notable increased use of our housing stock for short-term rental, less than 30 days. Many of us supported the coach commissions bed and breakfast and vacation rental recommendations. However, those recommendations were set aside by the village board in favor of further study and recommendations by a short-term rental... study and recommendations by a short-term rental work group convened in June 2017. The short-term rental work group code recommendations were released in February 15th of this year. A public hearing was scheduled during a bitter winter cold spell on February 22nd. A few resident neighbors and many who will profit from the now proposed changes in the code turned out. At a March 15th work group, the short-term rental draft provisions were brought to the attention of the village council, and residents in attendance again voiced concern about the proposed changes. We know that short-term rental brings significant benefits to those who operate them as well as to their guests. On the other hand, resident neighbors like ourselves hold concerns about short-term rentals, the impact on long-term housing availability for both older adults and families with children, neighborhood stability, and the risk of nuisance activity. We respectfully request that the village leaders take a pause in what seems to be a hasty process to reach closure on the code revisions. Many village residents are just becoming aware of the issues. We and they have many questions about specific code provisions and the required code development process. Most importantly, we have concerns about the impact on the future of our village. We believe that your actions may be inconsistent with principles that guide the village code. Number one, to promote or provide a flexible system of land use regulation that enables the village to grow while preserving its most important historic, natural, and cultural features. Two, to preserve the unique character of the village. Three, to enhance the sense of community among village residents. Four, to promote and preserve the village's historic structure, sites, and cultural features. And fifth, to enhance the aesthetic and architectural quality of the village. Given that the village master plan dates from 1993, perhaps the time has come to invest in a new round of community conversations on the kind of village we want to be. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nina, thank you.
May I ask a question? Ms. Lynch?
Ma'am.
Ms. Lynch?
Nina?
Do you have the original signatures that go along with this petition? Or was this done online?
Online. We did it, yeah.
Okay. I just needed, for the record, to have...
Do you want signatures?
Well... Well, no, I'm just, if that's how you got it, because it's typed, so I wasn't sure if it was done online or not.
My name is Ray Polata. I'd just like to make a comment about that flyer that Joe passed around. Before we make another mistake and put one up down there, and you have about 500 people beating at your door, I would suggest that you bring it up before an open meeting here and let them, everybody know that you're doing it, so we don't have another case like we just had. Second of all, apparently, the flag issue came from the town. The only thing I would say is that the town doesn't run the village. You were elected to run the village, not the town. Town's been trying to run the village for years. You were elected to represent us. Don't listen to what the town has to say. Do it what the village people want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, trustees. My name is John Worth, 36 Trinity Place. I only became aware recently about this issue about flags in our community, and I want you to know that I applaud the action that you took this evening with regard to that issue. I came this evening to speak about flags, and anytime we talk about flags, we're really not talking about flags, we're talking about what the flags represent. Last Thursday, I attended the burial service at the National Cemetery on the grounds of the Marine Corps Base, Quantico, Virginia, for Captain Peter Tree, a Marine that I served with. As I stood there, I could not help but feel that there are some Americans who could benefit from attending such a military burial where our national standard is the centerpiece of the ceremony. They would learn what it means to respect our flag and why. Our flag does not represent a political philosophy or any partisan position. It represents the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans, and it serves to honor those that sacrificed to protect our way of life. At the conclusion of the burial ceremony, a Marine officer places the flag in the hands of a grieving widow or family member with the words, "On behalf of the President of the United States, the Commandant of the Marine Corps, and a grateful nation, please accept this flag as a symbol of our appreciation for your loved ones' service to country and corps." It troubles me and many others to see our flag and those who served under it disrespected for personal grievances which have very little to do with our flag and the reasons why we honor it at public events and ceremonies. We also display another flag, which is referred to as the National or the POW MIA Flag. It was created, as you know, for the National League of Families of American Prisoners and those missing in Southeast Asia, and officially recognized by the United States Congress in conjunction with the veteran war POW MIA issue. As the symbol of our nation's concern and commitment to resolving as fully as possible the fates of American still prisoners, still missing and unaccounted for in Southeast Asia, thus ending the uncertainty for their families and our nation, take a moment to reflect upon what that particular flag represents. Prisoners of war and those missing in action or unaccounted for. How can we refuse to help deliver this message? A Marine going into combat knows that he has received the very best training that could be provided. He also has the assurance that wounded or dead, he would never be left behind on the battlefield. The best example of this devotion to another warrior is that of Captain James A. Graham, a member of my basic school company, H., known affectionately as the Horrible Hogs. Captain Graham was leading a company of Marines in Kwai San Kavalee on June 2nd, 1967, when they were attacked by a superior Vietcong force. The odds were overwhelming, and Captain Graham ordered his men to return to friendly lines while he remained with a wounded Marine who could not be moved. Captain Graham knew full well that he would not survive, but this is how he chose to spend his last moment on this earth. He would not leave a fellow Marine to be alone, to die. Captain Graham and many of my basic school classmates now rest peacefully at the Quantico National Cemetery. When we disrespect our national standard, incidentally, Captain Graham received the Medal of Honor for, for his valor. When we disrespect our national standard or the POW MIA flag, we dishonor those like Captain Graham who gave the ultimate sacrifice for us and our way of life. When we decide that we cannot do our small part to honor our veterans and our great nation, we selfishly proclaim that we are prepared to receive but not to give, and the sacrifice of those who served under our flag is of little consequence. Our national standard should forever be displayed proudly on all public buildings and facilities, and at all public gatherings and ceremonies, if for no other reason than to show our gratitude to those who helped to preserve our freedoms. At the same time, a similar display of the POW MIA flag sends a clear message that we, as a nation and a government, will do what we can to return home those who took our place on foreign soil and were regrettably left behind. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Thank you. Now we'll move into the next department reports, and we'll lead off with the Treasurers' report.
Okay. Thank you. The Treasurers' report is for the time period ending March 31st. The tax collectors account ended the month with $626,119. The general fund ended with $295,429. The water fund ended the month with $610,109. And the sewer fund ended the month with $592,96. We have...
Karen, excuse me a second. Excuse me, could we not have a conversation while we're trying to have presentations, sir? Thank you, Joe. I'm sorry, Karen.
So those are the balances in our primary accounts. I would also like to just report to the board that we have diversified some of these funds from the general water and sewer for a higher yield, and we're doing very well with them, and we'll just keep an eye on that as we go along. The vouchers presented for payment in the general fund with the prepaid total $59,155.83. In the water fund, $19,384.22. In the sewer fund, $29,929.40. We also have a bill for the Community Development Block Grant for Legion Park in the amount of $3,447.25. The monthly operating statement is provided with revenues and expenditures through April 10th. The water and sewer adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Sewer Department liaisons and are presented for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the sewer adjustments as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain?
I'd like to accept the water adjustments as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain? And I'd like to make a motion to accept all the budget amendments as presented for the general budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain? Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, police and courts. February court summary. Tickets that were completed for vote from court sessions and mailed in for the, for the month was 81. Revenue from the state is 2,625. Next is the police, monthly police reports. Total number of incidents in the town was 28. Total number of incidents in the village, 78. Total number of tickets for the town was 23. Total number of tickets for the village, 71. Total number of arrests was seven. Total number of accidents, three. And due to our late winter season, we still had some snow ordinance violations, and six tickets were issued, but we're hoping that will come to close as we now go into April for that. Next would be the fire department reports. Go back to that one second. For the month of March 2018, there were a total of 86 alarms for the fire department. 33 were fire, 51 were EMS, and two were motor vehicle accidents. The ambulance did not respond to 10 calls, and the response percentage was 81 percent. Respectfully submitted Kyle Amy, Fire Department Chief, and Chrissy Amy, EMS Captain. Next, building, planning, and zoning.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have March monthly fees that we'll read into the record. CO searches, $650. Building permits, $960. Planning Board escrow, $1,500. Approvals, Planning Board, $850. Zoning Board variances, zero. And, Mr. Mayor and Board, I do have an item that relates to a matter we've discussed previously. I want to continue this discussion, but because it does represent possible pending litigation, I respectfully request that we'll discuss it in executive session.
Okay.
And that's it for planning and zoning.
Highway Department. Okay. The Highway Department's been carrying out its duties, monthly duties of snow removal, maintenance, sonar placement, catch basin cleanouts, tree trimming and removal, and also, I know in the last week or so, the guys have been out cleaning the streets. We do have a couple pieces of business to take care of. We've had an ongoing problem at the, down at the garage with water getting into the septic system. And basically, whenever it was put in, there's a lot of groundwater in the area, it's infiltrating the, what's the word, the, the cistern there. The holding tank, the holding tank, yeah, the holding tank. And basically, that's required that we've had to pump it out basically on a monthly basis, which basically is costing us several thousand dollars a year, and it's been ongoing for a couple of years. It's been kind of kicked down the, the road. So at this point, everybody, the Highway Department's feeling pretty frustrated with that. So John Fenton went out and solicited three bids for, to have somebody come in, basically rework the system so there would not be water infiltrating into it, and we could stop this monthly pump out that we have to do. And I will shift over to the, to the bid. So three bids were solicited. It does not need, did need to be a public bid at this, at this level. And let me just get to the right file here. So, three bids were received, one from Clark Construction for $14,200, one from Matthews Service for $9,452, and one from Rock City Sand and Gravel for $12,900. And with the board's approval, I would like to approve the bid for Matthews Service to go ahead and do the repairs to the septic for $9,452.
Second.
All right, so can we have some discussion?
Sure.
We don't have the money in the budget to do it with the 2017, 2018 budget.
Okay, we, well, we have some capital. We have, we can steal a lot from the capital. We could, can we activate some from the, from the capital account? I mean, this is obviously a permanent repair for the, for the infrastructure.
I don't know the answer, if we can take it out of capital files. We'd have to do a budget. What capital fund are you referring to?
Isn't there, I thought we have a fund for large, large purchases for the Highway Department.
Not a capital fund. We have, we do have a capital fund that's dedicated for vehicles and all that kind of stuff that we could do.
I could, it's large capital.
But it's not an...
Is it for, for an infrastructure, a piece of infrastructure at the...
Well, the situation is, it's costing us about $300 a month to clean it out, and if we wait another 60 days, we're just going to waste $600 if we don't do it now. And that's a repair maintenance, and this, this is a repair maintenance.
Right, but it comes out of the expense budget. And we don't have the money in the 2017, 2018 budget, expense-wise.
I mean, it'll come out of the, the fund balance, right?
It would have, we'd have to make a transfer.
I didn't want to say the surplus.
We'd have, we'd have to make a transfer out of fund balance to do it.
Yeah.
I think, well...
This has been going on for eight...
Yeah, my, and my question is, is this going to...
Eight years.
Is this going to work right? Because this was already done, engineered by an engineer before, the same problem, and it's not working. So I think you have to have an enclosed plastic fiberglass tank, so nothing can leak out or leak in, right?
I think that's what's being proposed, Howie.
Well, I don't know what's being proposed.
Wait, it says concrete infiltrators. So what that is, is actually a leach field, and what we don't have right now is a leach field. So it won't stay in the tank, it can actually go somewhere to these infiltrators.
I don't think you can put a leach field there, though.
No, I think...
Too close to the stream. That was the whole problem.
That's what infiltrators are.
Let me, let me...
That's what infiltrators are.
All right, let me, let me, okay. So... Can you describe it, or do you want me to describe it?
You should describe it.
All right. I'm going to give you my interpretation of what I looked into. We have an enclosed septic tank, which, when the, our waste product goes into the septic tank, the septic tank is also receiving groundwater.
Right.
The combination of the two is causing us to have to pump this thing out on a monthly basis at a cost of $300 to pump, to pump it out monthly. The proposed fix for this, as I understand it, is to take the cap off of the enclosure that we have now, insert a new tank inside that tank, and pump into that new tank. So then any surface water cannot infiltrate into now that sealed tank that's inside, and surface water will come in and surround the area that's around it, but that will leach out because it's groundwater and go out. So the enclosed tank is stopping any groundwater from coming in, all right? And then that will go through the normal process and be, and be handled, and we will no longer have to pump it if we do this.
So the infiltrators are for groundwater, not for septic?
Not for septic, right. So that's what's being proposed. And it's a combination of labor between our Highway Department participating in labor, as well as contractor services to be able to do this. We adopted the budget tonight. It comes into effect the end of next month, and therefore we have the money in the monthly, in the capital, in the budget plan for 2018-2019.
And we've also set aside money for the pump outs, which we can take, which we can use, that's...
That money's been depleted because that was in the contractor fund for the 2017-2018, and we're, there's not, there's not $10,000 there left to spend.
But for the, for the 18, 19 budget?
We can take it out of our contingency expense budget, which we have, which we have money to do.
Right, right. Isn't that where we take it from?
2018-2019, yes. Not 2017-2018.
Right, 18, 19.
18, 19.
Right.
So all I'm saying is that we don't, we can accept the bid, but we don't execute until after May 31st. That's what I said.
Okay, I see.
Or maybe we can do it in May, but pay after June 1st. Where's Karen?
I don't, I don't want to know. I don't know about that legality, Howie, but...
But I agree with Brant. We just have to get this done as soon as possible.
Right, so can we wait till June? Can we wait till June 1st?
We could vote to use the fund balance also, because we, our fund balance was above our own targets.
Yes, it is. You can, you can do that.
And I guess if you really wanted to, you could replace the money with the, you know, the new budget.
Whatever you guys would like. I, I think we have 30 days. We could wait and do it, or we could do it now.
Well, it's 60 days, 45 days, right?
Yes, we're going to have one more pump out possibly in May of $300.
The mayor described, is that what was submitted by each of the three vendors?
Each of them had their own display of the different schemes for doing this, and this one seemed actually one that the department liked the most.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, the tank is a tank.
That's what you're kind of describing, right?
The tank and the tank.
Yeah, like a Plexiglas fiberglass tank so that no groundwater can get into it.
It's like a liner, like a liner or a tank within a tank.
Right, this tank that's there currently is concrete, and it has, the top is put on, and I think the bottom was, there's a lot of leakage going in there.
This will fix it.
So as a disclosure, I've used Matthews for septic repairs before. It's not an ethics code issue because, like, you know, I'm not a...
You're not, you know.
He's not a client, I'm a customer, that's all.
Right.
But I just want to ask another question. Is this, this new tank, is it going to sit on the bottom of the existing square tank?
Yes, it's...
So it's not going to be able to move around, right?
No, it's kind of full inside the tank, existing tank. It's made to fit drop down inside, like you would drop this bottle inside of it, right?
Yeah, because one of the problems we think we have is that with the groundwater being so high that, that the concrete tank actually moves when the, when the, when the groundwater, the water table gets high.
They can actually float.
Yeah, it can float around, so as long as the inside tank can't float around.
This water will, the groundwater will leach out and should not be, stay inside the tank, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So I would like to move that we spend, we take this money from the fund balance, of which we are actually over our target, and spend it, and, and spend it now, it is spring, and God knows there'll be enough water coming in there over the next couple of months. I think we have the ability, this has been a problem that's been ongoing for a long time. So I'd like to see a...
You have a motion already on the floor?
Yeah, you have to.
And it's accepted, but you haven't had a vote, so are you amending the motion to...
I'm, I'm amending the motion to approve the funds from the 2017-18 fund balance.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We have another, another issue. Also, for a long time, there's been a movement to have a study made of the potential for shared services between the village highway department and the town highway department. The county awarded us a $45,000 grant with which to go out and solicit bids for a proposal. John Fenton, Elizabeth Spenzia, and myself had a chance to receive three bids back. The county has a grading system that, that they use, and one bid really stood out. That's from the College of Brockport Metro Center. Basically, this is a, just to make it sure, long star sure, basically, they're former DPW guys themselves, and they've done this sort of consolidation, or should I say consolidation, shared services with a number of other communities in the area. They have a lot of experience. This is really right up their alley. The entire process is being funded by the county, so of course, county offered $45,000. Somebody came at, you know, 44,955. The process here would be about seven months long, so if we award it, we could get started, we would be done before the end of the year. And then we'd have a bit of a roadmap to understand where we can save money by sharing, by sharing services between the village and the town highway departments. So it's been discussed for a long time. We finally have a nice, a nice, nice, we had a good set of bids, but this is, this is the best one, so.
Did the town vote on this at all, or do we have to have...
We are, we are the lead agency, and we are, we are, we're the, we're the group that makes the, that makes the award. There is a working group that was myself, John Fenton, the mayor was there, Elizabeth Spenzia, and Barry Sherard, but, and they have a new liaison, Alan Sheer, for their, for their highway department. But Alan was not available on all these, he was not appointed, and he wasn't available on all these bids, and so the three of us took a look at the, to look at the bids. And it was, I'll say this, it was really, it was, should say it's clear, there was one bid that they agreed not to exceed $145,000. We thought, okay, that's a little expensive, right? They didn't really read the estimates. The other bid came from the Rockefeller Center, which is a policy center down in New Paltz, and very bright, very erudite, but they seem more like policy wonks. And these guys at Brockport seems like they really understood what it takes to run a highway department. Yeah, they're engineers, they run highway departments, this is their background, so they're not looking at it from some lofty point of view. They're like, okay, what should we, you know, how do you, how do you use that Bobcat and, and how can we use it more efficiently? I think they're very, very, get right into the guts of the, of the process. So it'd be nice, we've been talking about this for a while, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal from the research, excuse me, the College of Brockport Metro Center, Department of Public Administration for this, for this bid. Then basically what happens is it has to go up to the county, so you guys know, it has to go up to the county. They will, they know it, they'll take a look at it. The payment process goes through the county, so basically, this requires some meetings at the end of the process. There will be meetings with the village board and the town board to present the findings and see what happens.
Hi, Saka.
Yeah.
So, so you said it's a, costs 44,000 something?
Yeah.
900?
It's the county, right. They brought it right in under the county.
So it's underneath the 45,000?
Yes, yes. No, they, they magically came right in.
Okay.
Right there, right underneath. So, yeah, yeah. It's the county, yeah, the county.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain, still carried? Thank you.
Thank you.
One more bit of business.
What, okay, I don't know, I don't know what's happening with that, so.
Oh, who are you talking to? Okay. One more bit of highway business is, we recently had auctioned, had gone out for bid for several of the vehicles that we had, which included the Ford pickup truck and the police car. And I don't think we included, did we include the Durango?
We did, we did.
We did include, but did not receive any bids. There's been some renewed interest by parties to put that back out to bid for the, the Durango, which is still sitting at the highway garage. So I would like to make a motion that we place the Durango, which was the building inspector's vehicle, on the surplus list for bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Still carried? Thank you.
Can I ask, when do you want the bids to buy and...
Oh, that's a good question.
...opened and, yeah, the details?
So do we, we need to give, we have to have 10 days notice, so if, let's just assume, when could you get the bids out?
I can get them after, I can, because I still have the specs, so I should be able to get the email out to legal notice out. It could be published by Monday, and then 10 days after that, do you want a special meeting, or do you want them do the Friday before the board meeting, and then you can award the bid at the board meeting?
Sounds like a plan.
I like that plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Water department.
Not a lot. Total water treated, 11,481,000 gallons for March. There was a second power failure. One of the guys stayed there overnight because he wasn't sure if he could get in in the morning due to the weather. The settling tanks were drained and cleaned. The hydrants were cleared from, of snow from the storm. We fixed a main break on Old Post Road and repaired that, the four-inch main. We're going to have a meeting on Friday to discuss the water line project with our engineer Stan Tech. Did you, are you included in the email?
I did not get that, but it's okay.
Okay, 1:00 on Friday. So there's another round of funding. We're trying to get grant money and/or low-interest funding for the water line project, and we're going to pursue perhaps two paths. This is the discussion we're going to have on Friday, and John Rossi is hopefully going to get involved in pursuing the one funding from the Economic Development Group, yeah, for, which we already have a grant for the lower lip pump station for a much smaller amount, but we're going to pursue two avenues of funding, so that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Wastewater.
Okay. Wastewater Treatment Facility report for March 2018. Waste water treated was 4.4 million gallons. Gallons of sludge processed was 32,500 gallons, and pounds of sludge processed was 5,161 pounds. Now, I want to report on a project we've been talking about. This is for a, have you opened down to the wastewater department?
No.
One time or another, no? Okay. Well, when you go in, there's a building on the left, so it's a metal building, and there's two garage doors on it. One side has, inside is a dumpster with sludge in it, which, that's the end of the line for the wastewater department, basically. Sludge goes in there, and Brant knows about this.
In the waterway.
Yeah, it's, it's dry by the time it gets there. And then this is, when this gets filled up, it gets pulled out by a big truck, comes, pulls it out, and it's been wrecking the blacktop. Over time, the blacktop has been wrecked coming out of there. And on the other side of this building, there's another garage door where a lot of supplies go in. That's also uneven. What happens is when the trucks come there and deliver supplies on big pallets, pounds of bags, chemicals, it's hard for the guys to roll it back in because that side is uneven with the, with the level of the floor in the building. So anyway, Pete wants to have an apron pad built out of concrete there. We've talked about this, I think, before. So what has to happen is that has to be all torn out, all the blacktop, and then new concrete has to be put in, leveled, at a gradual slope. So John Fenton has reached out to three contractors to, for prep work for this project, to tear it all out and get it ready for new concrete. So there's two different people that have to do this job, two different outfits. He reached out to three people, he got one quote back from Jeffrey Decker for $6,100 to prepare the area. Now Pete has reached out to a few people to actually build the concrete ramp, and he only has one bid back so far. I'd like to get at least one more or two more, just to make sure we get a, you know, try to get three. He said he's tried to get three. I know one more person who might, I don't think he's bid on it, he's even looked at it yet, but I can probably get one more person there to look at it. So anyway, I don't know if I'm looking for approval to at least start on the work to get the, the area prepared, to have that cleaned out by Jeff Decker.
Well, don't we need multiple bids on that as well? Because it's over, it's $6,100.
Well, he's the only, he's the only person that's gotten back to it. Karen, if she was still here, she said, I talked to her about this before, she says we're under the procurement policy of...
Well, as long as you make a good faith effort to obtain three bids.
John has names of people.
They just tear out, remove the materials, and then what?
Tear it out, level it off, put...
Some underlaying in there?
Yeah, the right, the right sub base.
A basin there?
It's right here, I got copies of this, if you want to see it.
My only question is if there's a delay between the tearing out and the replacement.
Right, well, see...
Is that going to mess up the prep?
Pete's trying to get this under this year's budget. I don't know if it really has to be, I don't think we're under the gun like you are. Here's Jeff Decker's bids.
I, my only concern is trustee Louis had a delay between the two, because then it makes it impossible to get materials in there.
Right.
And I think it needs to be as kind of a seamless thing as to what we talked about, to make it all work. And whether that's all one bid or two bids or whatever, I think we should look at the total project and have it bid it as whole.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
So you mean have one contractor say, act, a sub?
Well, I don't care. No, you can have multiple contractors do it. You can break the bid up. Somebody's tearing it out while another person is going to rebuild it, not, but the total price, then the two is the total price, and if we can get another bid in good faith effort on the total price versus independent, then we made a good faith effort to try to get a fair bid on it.
Okay, so we can wait for another month? No, it's really not that, it's not as pressing as...
You're not going to have to pump it out again.
Right.
The spring, the spring rain running.
I told Pete we can slow down, we can wait.
I mean, this has been discussed for many months.
Yeah.
So it's...
Well, he's waiting for springtime to get going.
Not urgent. All right.
Okay, so that's that.
So we're going to wait?
We'll wait.
And get bids, and you'll bring those bids in?
Yes.
All right. I think that's a great plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it for the wastewater department.
Committee reports. Tree committee.
Okay. Get to the right page here. Tree committee has been quite busy. This, later this month, the tree committee will be doing their annual spring planting. And I will give you guys some more information about that at a moment. So let me do, let me do the committee report first. First of all, the committee had a request for a, excuse me? Okay. For a tree removal, but the person did not specify the company who's doing it, so they held it over for another year, another month. Second lady? So...
So, you know, this from February is held off another month?
Yeah, there's no, there's no action on it. There's no, there's no, there's no contractor. They didn't need to have a contractor. Okay. On April 28th, which is a Saturday, the committee, the tree committee will be holding its annual spring tree planting. People with meeting at 9:00 a.m. at Chancellor Livingston School. You're asked to bring your own tools, if you have them. Label them, shovel, rake, a bucket, gloves, sturdy footwear. Please use a piece of Scotch tape and put, or not tape, put your name on it. If there are students out there who are interested in doing it, it's three service hours towards your, towards your community service. And this year, I'm pleased to report that the committee has 19 trees that they are plant, that they are gonna be planting. It's all of them on the south side of town. And it also includes some trees down at Chancellor Livingston. And we're talking about whether the village is gonna get reimbursed for those, but it's a little bit up in the air. But this hopefully will begin a new cooperation between the school district and the tree committee, because in the fall, the committee would like to see some more volun, some more student volunteers come out. And there are sites along some of our roads that would be nice on school property, that would be nice to put up some trees. So we're hoping that this may be the first chance for the school and the tree committee to get together, work, work together. As I said, there was a question, it has not been floated, whether the district will reimburse us for four trees. They're out there. So...
We've had school participation all along, but what we're driving for is to have crater...
Yeah, crater. I should say, right, I should say it really to, maybe to make it a little bit more routinized, have the kids be more aware, and then over time tie it into Arbor Day, and just bring it a little bit more into the curriculum.
Yeah, because at school, the students that participate have been fantastic.
Yeah, no, no, they are great. It's just, it's making it more. Not that it wasn't, it's just making more.
Good.
That's it for trees.
Okay. Anything on ethics?
I had a quick, okay. Yeah, that...
Well, we got a question from Carol Urban. She's the head of the Ethics Committee. She wanted to know what's a standard operating procedure for consulting with legal counsel? Should I seek your okay in advance? And I know you responded to her.
Yeah.
But I wanted to ask the mayor what, what he thinks. Did you guys talk about it?
No.
Oh, oh.
Well, basically, I took a look at the code, at Village Code, which says that the Ethics Committee Chair can speak directly to village council. That was, that's the way the code's written, and I think that's to make sure if there was any potential conflicts, that they would not, that they would not run there. And the council would be asked to refuse himself if the council was part of, part of the conflict. But Village Code did say, the Ethics, Ethics Committee Chair is authorized to go speak to, to village council.
This sounds familiar.
Okay, because usually, we don't let committees...
I think that's the way it should be, because they should be running independently of us.
Yeah, I, I...
It's okay with me, as long as everybody knows.
Well, I think, I think this is a special instance, because it's the Ethics Committee.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that was it, right? Our second question was...
About some reporting.
Yeah, and I note that the village trustee meeting agenda is often include reports by trustees and the committees on which they liaise. The Ethics Board will not be meeting on a regular basis, and I'm not sure what you might want from me in any way of input for your reporting.
So again, I, I replied, basically, I, once again in code, there is requirement of an annual report from the village Ethics Committee, and a report if and when a decision is rendered. So basically, they, there seems to be no provision for, if somebody makes a complaint or makes an allegation, that does not have to be reported to the board. But if the board, the Ethics Board does make a recommendation, then that's when we receive a report. And I guess, again, it's to sort of create a bit of a distance between the Ethics, Ethics Board and, and the other functions of, of the village. So that, that, and that basically came, that came, not basically, that did come out of the code. I renamed the code.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure it was on the same page.
It's good, yeah.
Short-term vacation rental.
So there's a wrinkle with the short-term rental, and it's very interesting. We had a discussion with the attorney, Rich Olson, and with John Fenton today, I did. And John, there's an overlay here with the issue of building code enforcement. And we have some information from a neighboring municipality who's also going through the same notion of adopting a regulation that affects short-term rentals. And we got some information basically from them. And it's about a new, more rigid restriction in the New York State Building Code that apparently just hit, because it's a 2017 adopted, but it's, goes into effect January 2018. And they've tightened the definition of bed and breakfast. And I'm just gonna read what it says here. By definition, is, a bed and breakfast dwelling is defined in the 2017 New York State Code Supplement as an owner-occupied residence resulting from a conversion of a one-family dwelling used for providing overnight accommodations and a morning meal to not more than 10 transient lodgers, and containing not more than five bedrooms for such lodgers. Now what happens is, again, okay, so there's more. The state code division has advised us that the basic difference between a bed and breakfast occupancy in a lodging house in New York State is that bed and breakfast are conversions of existing single-family houses, whereas lodging houses are the construction of a brand-new occupancy of this nature. So what's happening is that for many bed and breakfast, non-hosted bed and breakfasts, they're basically treated as a group R1 occupancy, which is equivalent to a hotel, motel, lodge kind of thing. The key, I'm reading, for allowing a less stringent set of fire safety requirements is owner occupancy component of a one-family dwelling. Any, my emphasis, any other occupancy used for short-term rentals that are not owner-occupied single-family homes will be regulated as a group R1 occupancy, occupancy similar to a hotel or motel. R1 occupancies would require a full fire alarm system, as opposed to simple smoke detectors and a full NFPA automatic sprinkler system. Also, I have a list of some things where, that R1 categories require. Alarm system, as I said, fire extinguishers, smoke and fire detection systems, automatic sprinkler systems, carbon dioxide system, audio and visual strobes, exit signage, and emergency lighting. So folks, this is a gating item. This is, this is sort of like a business decision with the, the community that has Airbnbs that are non-hosted. And the issue is, would any one of these folks, knowing if they even had non-hosted rentals for five days, for 10 days, for 15 days, 20 days, do they even want to go through this? In other words...
Or even for two, is it for, there's, there's no restriction. It could be one day, right?
That's, that's what our, that's what our understanding is.
It could be...
Any non-hosted situation.
Unhosted.
In our code, owner occupancy is six months and a day or something. We're thinking about changing it to 240 days a year. Owner occupancy, under the fire code, according to John Fenton, is, are you there or aren't you? Is the owner there or aren't they? And once they're not there, it's treated as an R1 occupancy, which is like a hotel, motel, or a lodge. The question is, do we even move forward? Does the investment, the folks that are investing in these Airbnb situations, non-hosted, do they even want us to move forward with this, these code revisions?
Now, this is state fire code.
State fire code.
To be clear, if everybody is, state fire code, yes.
And the county has, John Fenton can explain, the county also has some, some more requirements on, on these things. But this is new, you know, relative, I mean, what, 60 days old? It just became into effect, from what I understand. This is how John is interpreting it. Rich was there, and he agreed with us. So I think what we need to do is either, is maybe have a workshop and discuss whether the STR folks want us to, the short-term rental folks want us to even move forward on code revisions, making the code more permissive, if they're gonna have to do all these things. Sprinkler system, which I guess you need like a four-inch water main coming into your house from the...
Disabling the fire line?
Just to, just to have the volume of a fire suppression system, sprinkler system like that. You know, you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars in retrofits.
Now, are other municipalities following this code, you know?
We don't know the history yet, but apparently, the city, local city is, is gonna follow, follow this. And John has talked to this building inspector from the local city, so, beacon.
Beacon. If it's a New York City fire code, don't you have to go buy it?
You have to go buy it.
Yeah, no, it's...
Are you gonna give me copies of that to put into the minutes?
Well, this is not an internal document for our, I can just...
So I'm just gonna say that...
I can email you what I just read, you know?
Please.
Yeah. And forward you, John Fenton's emailed me this afternoon. I'll, I'll forward you that one. Because I, I printed it out, but I'm losing ink, so I actually had like a skunk stripe down the middle. I didn't bring it.
Now, you said owner occupied. Does that think, so that wouldn't, how would a owner's representative?
That's uncertain.
Yes, that's why, I think you brought up the right question. Should this go back to, is the workshop the right place, or is it back to the committee to really work through this and decide what is needed to be done?
Mike, we could go back to committee, but the committee kind of decided that we were done, we were finished, and I don't know if I can get the, get the gang back together.
But this is new.
This is very new.
New information that wasn't considered by the committee.
Yeah, I know.
That it was not considered or discussed.
What do you guys think? I know what you're saying, if we have workshop and John will just be answering questions, it might be a little helter-skelter.
My concern is, I'd like to, I, I think it should go back to committee, because we got new information that needs to be done, so that we can flush out the details. This, I, I haven't read this, but I know fire, some about fire codes, and it's a technical document.
It's very technical.
And so, we can have a workshop, but, but having somebody that has not interpreted and has, you know, gone through the code and can present that code, I don't think, I don't know whether we could...
Well, John would be able to do that, that's, that's...
That would be his job, that he would, he would have to field the questions.
I think if, I think we have an obligation to have another workshop, because this is potentially a game changer.
Yeah.
This is a very big deal, from what Brent is sharing. And if the workshop were enough into the future, two, three weeks from now, that should give adequate time to do additional research. I'm glad that Rich Olson, council was there. Sounds like he's already developing an opinion on this, Brent. So which is seem to me that, A, we should do this, and B, between the time that we had the new workshop, we would want to continue the due diligence.
That's the point. We need somebody to do the due diligence, and if that's...
Would that be council?
It would be council and...
Council and John together.
And John Fenton, at the minimum, that would need to, to lay this all out.
Zoning enforcement and legal, we, it's too much better than that.
Yeah, I don't think it's even an issue for us to even handle it.
I, no, for us, you'd have to know the code.
Right.
You'd have to be a expert in all...
Building and fire code, yeah, exactly.
You'd have to know it very well to be able to interpret it.
Yeah, we would want, we would want to put ourselves in a position of attempting to interpret any of that. But we would want our professionals, that are there to support us, doing this due diligence, and then presenting this very new information to the community in the best informed and thorough way that we can, Mr. Mayor. That's my thought.
And, but a workshop is meant to be a workshop, not a public hearing. So it's a workshop, present the code, and talk about the code.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what, if we want to do a workshop, I'm okay with that. If it's, if the committee, the gang can't get together, all right, as you said...
I can try.
Because there's experts that were on that, on that committee as well.
But not in, but not in buildings.
I guess I really want to rely on council, in my opinion.
What do you guys think?
Well, if you're saying you can't get the, the gang together...
I'm not sure.
He hasn't tried yet, so, this is, this has...
I think you should try, but of course, we're gonna rely on council, in the end, we're gonna rely, but maybe just out of respect, try to get the, get the committee back together, see. And then do a workshop.
Okay.
If you can't, then we'll go to the workshop.
Are we gonna have a meeting in between now and next month, or?
That's what I was gonna ask, do you want to set a date for a workshop, or?
Well, I don't know, how long does it take to interpret, I'm, again...
Yeah.
I mean, we were talking, you and I talked about having a workshop before this came down, like a month from now.
We said, we said we needed another workshop, absolutely.
Well, set it up then.
We should put a stake in the ground, you should.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, the, hopefully the committee can get together and review, and we can get legal counsel involved, and John Fenton involved, and work it that way, is that right?
So how about Wednesday, a month, well, the day after our next monthly meeting?
I'd have to check and make sure there isn't village court. So can I, can it be contingent on the, that this room is available?
Okay.
So that would be for the workshop?
That would be May 9th.
Yeah, and we'll try to, we'll, we'll definitely get organized by then.
You said the Wednesday after the board meeting, right?
Yeah.
So that'd be May 9th.
Brent, I just wanted to just clarify, so the R1 designation, that's a state designation for lodging, unfortunately not resident.
Hotels, motels, and lodging, lodging stuff, yeah.
So that's R1, and that, and all this code basically supersedes our code, or we have to, we have to be in tune...
Yeah.
...with that code. Okay.
This is big.
Yeah, no, no, so basically, I just want to understand, so basically, we have a, a new set of regulations that have come down from, from, from the state. They're making a distinction between owner-occupied, owner-unoccupied, and basically B&amp;B versus everything else. And everything else turns out to be a hotel, or a lodging, which then requires a full, the full fire code treatment.
The stuff you see at the Hampton End, I mean, if you stay at the Hampton End.
Yeah, so the key is hosting.
Okay.
I think what he's saying here is, if you're not, if it's unhosted, you have to do this. So in other words, if you go away for a day or a weekend, your, your home is unhosted.
Right. But also, the question was, and we've begun to technical at this point, there was a B&amp;B designation.
So that's, our code will facilitate the hosted rentals, because we have...
They have to serve breakfast.
That's hosted.
That's hosted with, with a B&amp;B, they say their breakfast, right?
But they're hosted.
But they're, right. You're not gonna be the breakfast tester? Okay, I just want to, I mean, I, I, this gets very, it gets very complicated, and it's coming here, but I'm just trying to understand.
Our code facilitates hosted registered resident host rentals, which is the one- and two-bedroom, which requires a permit, and then the three-to-five-bedroom, which requires site, site plan review.
Okay.
Okay. New stuff.
So stay tuned.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So May 9th for a planned workshop, contingent there's no other court or other meetings being held. And you want to set an alternative date, if that is true?
The next Tuesday, or is that zoning stuff? Probably zoning stuff.
The 17th?
Probably.
Oh, the next Tuesday after May, May meeting?
It's every other Tuesday.
May 15th, I'd have to look and see.
That's probably his, planning board or something.
Yeah. It'd have to be an off night, get out of the way of planning.
That's why we say Wednesday.
Can't be Monday, can't be Tuesday, you know? I'd have to look at the calendar.
All right.
And I'll let the board know, and then we'll do a public notice.
So Pat, you'll, you'll come out with an alternative date?
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you all, and then we'll do a legal notice for it.
Yep. Thank you. Very good. Okay. Yep, thank you. Good. Okay. Environmental Committee report. Environmental Committee. What I'd like to, what we discussed last month, we had Dan Shapley, Director of Riverkeepers, to talk about the intermunicipal water, intermunicipal council memorandum of agreement between the seven municipalities, which are, I'm sorry, is it something I said? You know, that he talked about, and we've been meeting on regularly. At that meeting, we talked about approving at this meeting or reviewing the, the IMA between these seven. So I'd like to read into the record, the IMA that has been proposed. This memorandum of, this is dated 2/118, it's a Hudson River drinking water intermunicipal council memorandum of agreement. This memorandum of agreement is entered into as of this, as of, assuming today, April 10 of 2018, between, between the following parties, and the parties include the town of Esopis, town of Hyde Park, town of Lloyd, town of Poughkeepsie, city of Poughkeepsie, the village of Rhinebeck, and the town of Rhinebeck. Whereas the Hudson River estuary is a primary drinking water supply for over 100,000 people in the city and town of Poughkeepsie, village and town of Rhinebeck, town of Hyde Park, town of Lloyd, town of Esopis, and whereas maintaining and enhancing water quality in the Hudson River and its tributaries is essential to the public health, the economic well-being, environmental resources, and quality of life of these communities. And whereas source water protection is a series of measures defined and encouraged through federal state programs, including the Safe Drinking Water Act amendments of 1996, designed to take a watershed approach to protecting drinking water supplies from contamination. And whereas a review of source water protection related programs by the Center for Watershed Protection and Riverkeeper has recommended a number of actions, including chiefly the development and implementation of a source water protection program for this water supply, and the formation of an intermunicipal drinking water council to do so. And whereas the New York State Department of Health has delineated a source watershed for these public drinking water supplies, defined as the portion of the Hudson River estuary extending five miles downstream and 15 miles upstream of each drinking water intake, as, excuse me, as well as all the areas of direct drainage and portions of several tributaries in this region. And whereas the undersigned parties wish to explore mutually beneficial ways of sharing information and resources to protect and improve water quality in the Hudson River estuary and its tributaries and its source watershed. And whereas cooperation pursuant to this memorandum of agreement should result in, among other things, enhanced opportunities when applying for grants to fund mutually beneficial projects with respect to improving water quality in the Hudson River estuary and its watershed, including water infrastructure and watershed protection projects, and two, enhanced intergovernmental communication and coordination, providing for opportunities for shared services, and a more efficient and cost-effective coordinated approach to implementing the current and future source water protection projects, and three, a formation of coordinating agencies and organizations at the municipal, county, regional, state, and federal levels, and four, long-term watershed stewardship to maintain improved water quality, and five, a unified voice advocating for common interest and for sharing the experience and lessons learned with the other communities. Whereas pursuant, cooperation pursuant to this memorandum of agreement shall not be construed so as to interfere with or diminish municipal powers, authority, or regulatory authority of any of the undersigned parties. And whereas the parties wish to formally affirm their continuing partnership with each other in order to protect, conserve, and enhance the water resources of the river and the watershed, and now therefore, pursuant to the authority vested in them by Section 119-0 of the General Municipal Law of New York State, the undersigned parties hereby agree as follows. One, the undersigned parties hereby form and establish the Hudson River Drinking Intermunicipal Council, here and after called the Council, to be comprised of one representative and one alternative from each undersigned party, and other entities or individuals of public that qualify for membership as determined by the Council. Two, the Council will work to address the aforementioned issues, which efforts may include, but are not limited to, the following: securing and sharing the public and private grants available to address issues pertaining to watershed protection and management, consider and act on the recommendations in the Center for Watershed Protection Riverkeeper Source Water Protection Report. The Council may, and three, the Council may develop or adopt bylaws that describe how the Council will function, including decision-making, information on voting procedures, making public statements as a group, regular meetings, subcommittees, strategic plans, and other basic operating principles. Four, each undersigned party may, at its discretion from time to time, change its representative or alternate to the Council. Five, each participating municipality should at least once a year present to its respective municipality a report on the progress made in achieving the Council's goals envisioned hereunder. Sorry, this is one more page. Six, the Council may establish subcommittees, including members and non-members, as needed to obtain public input and participation from nonmembers in ongoing activities. Seven, and the undersigned party may terminate its participation in the Council and this agreement at any time by notifying all the undersigned parties in writing of the termination, reasons for the termination, and effective date thereof. Withdrawal from the Council and this agreement by one undersigned party shall not operate to terminate the agreement, which shall continue in full force and effect with respect to all the other undersigned parties. Eight, the agreement does not require the payment of any funds by any undersigned party, nor does it commit any undersigned party to take any specific action with respect to the river, the watershed, or the undersigned party itself. If at a later time, funding shall be requested from an undersigned, from an undersigned party to report the Council activities, it should be determined and agreed to by the Council in accordance with the bylaws and according to operating procedures. This, nine, this memorandum of agreement shall remain in full force and effect for a period of five years from its effective date, as described below in paragraph 10, and shall be automatically renewed for successive five-year terms until the Council is dissolved by its membership. Ten, this agreement is not meant to supersede any federal, state, or local law or regulation governing the issues addressed herein, nor is it meant to supersede the authority of any municipal agency that has jurisdictions and over such issues. Eleven, this agreement may be executed in any number of counterparts, each of which shall be deemed an original, but all which, when taken together, shall constitute one and the same instrument. Twelve, the Council should be considered formally constituted upon execution of this memorandum of agreement by any number of municipalities. Thirteen, the Council may decide to invite additional members in order to effectively achieve the goals of the Council, and in witness thereof, the following, the following parties, their chief executive officials of each of the aforementioned municipalities have executed this agreement. That is the IMA for the seven municipalities. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that this has been reviewed by legal counsel, and I'll briefly read his report. I read the memorandum of agreement. I can't object to any of the goals established since it solely relates to the issue of clean drinking water. The agreement commits abilities to participation in the Council to, to attempt to implement the goals of the Riverkeeping and Center for Watershed Protection. There is no required monetary commitment, and you can withdraw from the Council. It will be a commitment of time, and if some of the goals require funding, it may require contribution from members of the Council in amounts or percentages to be determined. I cannot see any reason not to join with any of the other municipalities, our legal counsel. We've lost trustee Lewis. So, any questions on the IMA?
Well, it's worth it just to have, you know, concerted up for, for source water protection, I mean, in, in the barges in particular, if that issue comes back, I don't know if that issue's actually, you know, totally gone away, or, but, and for, you know, grant issues and things like that, I, I like it, so.
Yeah, this is something that I started with in February a year ago, and has moved progressively, and all the municipalities have been really forefront in wanting to, to work with us, and so far, I believe four of the seven have adopted this resolution. The goal is to have all of them adopted by the, by the, by the end of May, with their prospective meetings, and then at that time, we will adjourn another meeting of the Council to, to push forward.
This is a draft, is it a final?
Well, I should say, this is the final.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was, it's really the final. There's been no amendments or changes to it, as it's been presented in draft form.
Look, it's, it's obviously a very important and high-value undertaking. I appreciate that she had, not just the items that she read, Mr. Mayor, but the comments from Rich Olson, counsel, and seven and eight was what I was most keen on, which says, doesn't cost anything, and you can jump off, jump out anytime you want, so.
Well, the goal is, though, that we get value, by working together, there's, there's real value in taking our, our message forward, and there's also real value in sharing information in, on our water plants, and how chemical processes and everything can be implemented, and we can drive that process.
As I said, a high-value proposition, we should pursue it, but it's, if it's something that we're voting on, and we are, it's nice to know that there's an exit ramp.
Yes.
In the unlikely hood of needed, and that it doesn't cost anything.
All right, now trustee Lewis is back, I'd like to make a.
I read it, I did read it.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Drinking Water Intermunicipal Council Memorandum of Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, thank you.
Lot of work.
It was good work to get to that. One more thing in the environmental committee, and I do not have it in front of me, I apologize, but I just want to make everybody aware that the village has received two parking grants for the $32,000 maximum for EV charging stations for the purpose of pursuing and implementing EV parking within the village. We have a lot of, we have a lot of work to do to be able to get to the point where we can execute on these, on either one of these grants, and we still have yet to hear from NYSERDA on the final requirements or documentation that they submitted, but they did say that they will be forwarding that in, in the near future for us to execute and understand what their restrictions are, if there are any. But I want to make everybody aware that we have received these grants. I don't see how we can execute both in parallel, but the first one is to try to focus on the EV charging stations here behind our municipal parking lot, and work on getting that through. One of the things I believe we need to do that, even here within our municipality, is to have a project manager.
Yeah.
Per se, to help us do that execution. I've been in contact with an individual, she's not drawing a blank.
Denny?
Yeah, Denny, last name now. Yeah, anyways, I have a meeting set up, but if on approval of the board, I would, you know, if this person is acceptable and wants to agree, to be able to work with him, to work us through the process of implementing EV charging stations here in the back. Denny Collet, I'm sorry, I couldn't think of the name, I was drawing a blank. Denny Collet has, has already implemented these in the town of Red Hook, and is very familiar with the process, and knows exactly what is done, and we're doing exactly what the town of Red Hook did, it's actually no different than what they have done, so he's very familiar with how to make this happen. So I do have a discussion set up with him, but with board approval, if that, if he's agreeable, I would like to extend that offer as a project manager to start the execution, once we have the full NYSERDA agreement.
I've met Denny, he's really, a really smart guy, and he's a really good guy at implementing. Is he, is it a pay position, or how does this get?
We have to have that discussion, I'm not sure, but in talking with trustee Rossi, we have put allocated funds within the agreement to do some sort of pay for that, if we, if we need to.
Right.
So that was covered, we put it in there.
Part of the grant.
In anticipation as part of the grant.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
It's worth mentioning that the Mid-Hudson Council, that represents NYSERDA for us, and specifically Ropa McGovern, the young woman who greatly assisted us, you know, with this process and the application, they think the world of Denny. I mean, they, they, he was really the pioneer in the early application process, and many of us have plagiarized, but we have made good use of a lot of the materials that he put together in the original RFP, so.
So I believe trustee Rossi is meeting with, with Ian, when we're doing that, I believe you've been invited.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yes. So it'll be the two of us meeting with Mr. Collet to, to discuss this. So with your approval, I'd like to move forward with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, thank you very much. Parks Committee.
Okay, I want to report to the board something here on the Legion Park grant we got from the county. I got, I got one for everybody. I put one up here, so maybe I can explain it better up here. I think I can do it too.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
That's great.
Did you guys see this?
I don't know.
This is just a bigger picture of what I gave you. You can probably explain it better up here. So I met with Ryan Louts of Crawford, our engineer. The survey is done, and after he examined the survey, he realized, first of all, this is, this is the road coming up from Route 9, going up to the lake, this is the lake here, Crystal Lake. And any grant, this is for handicap accessible parking, this is what was originally planned, two parking spots up here. Now, as you know, to do that, we have, our lot goes farther back than what is, what currently exists now, which we think exists now. There's some bushes here, there's a fence that goes through here. So he think, he was thinking, in order to save money, there's existing concrete right here, pavement, and on your thing that says pavement removal. He was thinking of putting a handicap parking over here to try to save money, and put it over here, you have to add some, some pavement over here, and leave this open. I said to him, why don't we go along with the same plan we have, but also add to this existing pavement over here, he has some diagrams here, which aren't on yours, but, and make three spots up here for the, for non-handicap parking, because as it is, there's no parking, there'd be no parking up there for anybody else to park up here. This would only be for handicap parking. So what I'm saying is, keep it the way it is, not take this pavement out, we can save money that way, but add some pavement here, which would probably make up for not taking the pavement out, make this area a little bit bigger, so we can have around three spots here, one, two, three, maybe four, he said, spots for cars up here. So I just wanted the board's opinion on that. He wants me to get back to him, so he can finalize his plan.
I like the idea that you're advocating to keep the handicap spots really up, because it is a hill.
Yeah, well, it really isn't a hill here, you'd think there is, but if you go up there, get some time up there and look, it does go up a little bit.
No, as opposed to, if you follow the engineer's suggestion, Howie, that move it down.
Right.
Then, then it's a little bit annoying, people that are handicapped.
Right.
So I like your idea, let's just keep it there, and I, I like the idea of adding additional spots.
It would still be grassier. The only difference is, we'd be adding this up here, we have, like I said, we have to take out some bush here, farther bushes, and then there's, there's a fence here, split rail fence that we put up a few years ago, we have to take that down, maybe not completely, maybe go back a little bit, but this way we, we would gain three, three to four spots over here. Because as we were saying before, we were thinking about putting spots down here on the roadway going up, alongside that stone wall, we might avoid doing that now.
But there was more spots down below, wasn't there before? Than three or four?
There might be room for five or six down there.
Yeah.
But we, we still could do that, we need more room, but.
So you're saying in the future, we could expand if we needed to add more, or wanted to add more in the future?
Right, down by the.
Down by the.
Down by the, the road and the, the stone wall there, on the left, going up the road to the left.
Right.
And this would not add to the total cost of the initial.
So we're still underneath 100,000 that we've been received for the grant, to be able to do anything, to do this?
Right, because we're not, we're not taking this out, this would cost money to take this pavement out, but we're adding a little pavement right here, which, he's going to be putting pavement over here, so it's not that much more to add a few feet there. And he's still talking to the dock people, he hasn't really gotten, gotten any estimates back on different docks.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is the first we're seeing this, so we're trying to digest this real time here.
Yeah, no, I just spoke to him last Friday. I went to his office and spoke to him, because he had the survey done, he had some ideas he said, so.
Oh, my only suggestion, Howie, is next time load it up, give it the patch, he can scan it, and we can load it up, so we can view it.
I met him last Friday about 4:30 in the afternoon, so nobody's here. But I mean, you don't have to make a decision right now, but if you want.
Oh, I thought you wanted an answer tonight.
Well, to keep the project going, maybe if, maybe you guys can email me what you think, or if you want to wait till next month, we can wait till next month.
I have one question. I like the idea of being frugal, and I like the idea of convenient practice spaces, but does it also kind of destroy some of the aesthetics up there, if you put, make the parking lot up there bigger? Do you're making a little.
No, you have to go up there and see.
I've, no, I've been up there, it's not that big, yeah.
This is all dirt right now. This is all dirt right now, right here.
Yeah.
Right here's all dirt.
It's like gravel.
It's mud.
Yeah.
Right, it's supposed to be seeded, though, I think it would just turn into grass.
Well, yeah, you're going to seed, okay, if you take all this out, yeah, you can seed all this.
Right.
Then you got to put parking spaces down here along the road.
Right, and.
So whether you seed it one way or the other, this is already up here.
And the reality is, if people want to fish, they're not going to want to park, they're going to let all their stuff up that little hill.
It's a long way.
It's a long way. No, I understand for the convenience, I see the.
This would be grassier.
It makes it more user-friendly.
I like the idea of the handicap parking up there, too, because that's where you want the handicap parking as close as possible.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, to be able to do it. One of the issues I brought up last time, we've always had here, was where to push snow.
Push it right here.
So we could, that would all just, but won't that block off act, anybody wants to use it in the wintertime?
There'll be a little walkway here.
We push it into the lake. What's it do in Boston?
There's a fence.
Yes.
There's many fences going in there.
There's a split rail fence here, you can't really push it into the lake.
There's some split rail here.
Yeah. And also, was there, talk about a place to, like, launch a canoe or a kayak or something? I don't see that, I don't remember.
There was no launching dock, launching area proposed, just this.
Just the dock.
The fishing dock.
That's on the other side.
It seems like it's, you could, real close to water level, like you could drop a canoe in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at that from a point of view, if you wanted to, like, load your canoe.
And now, the highway department is going to be responsible, the dock will be, is removable dock, is that still the plan?
Yeah, well, that's why he's getting different, he wants to get different ideas, but he hasn't gotten the back.
We don't know that yet, okay.
He hasn't gotten the back.
But in terms of maintenance, winter maintenance and everything, it would still be the highway department that would be responsible for keeping the sidewalk clear.
Right.
We would do that throughout the winter as well as the snow removal.
Right.
So.
That can be a challenge.
I mean, if we have a lot of snow, maybe you lose a parking spot here.
Yeah, I guess I would just, has our DPW looked at this at all? Has he had a chance to look at it?
No. But like I said, this happened Friday afternoon, so. Again, we don't have to make a decision now, we can talk to everybody and.
Is, was the additional parking spaces down below part of the?
No, no, that was just, yeah, because when we do this, there's going to be no parking for anybody else anywhere right now, except for the police car that sits down there.
Okay.
So we talked in the past about, when you go up this road, the left-hand side, there's a stone wall there, there's some grass, maybe you make some.
But I thought that was always part of the plan, to do that.
Not really, not part of this.
So what you're saying is, for, inside our grant, we can squeeze maybe two to three parking spaces into the, into the process?
The grant is just for this area, and no other parking was proposed.
I think we need two parks up there, non-handicap.
And, yes, somewhere of your own, to get the parking close by. I like the concept. So if I understand, the parking is in this section here, right? The additional parking?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Right, yeah, right here, right along, this is the road going up, there's a hill here.
Yep.
And right here, to the right, there's already pavement right there, right now.
Where the pavement is, and the split rail fence is today.
Yeah, the split rail fence is right here, here's the lake over here.
Yep.
So if you go up there, there's pavement right there, right now. This pavement over here, they were going to take out also, this means, this cross stuff means they were going to take out, remove the pavement, which we still can do over here, but he's saying, if we leave this here, he said to move this over here, but I said, leave this here and empty this, it makes three, three or four parking spots over there.
But we're pushing, were the handicap access, we're pushing further than what we were before?
No, no, no.
No?
That's exactly where it was.
Exactly where it was, okay.
It's just that now that the survey is done, he realizes how far back our property goes, because if you go up there right now, you might think that our property, the property only goes to this split rail fence.
Right.
So that doesn't look like a lot of room there, but it goes back here.
Okay. An original plan?
If you want to go up there, it's all staked out now.
And the original plan included going back that far?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the original plan.
I have a, oh, wow, who knows?
But.
A question, would it be worth flipping the handicap and the regular parking, just on the theory that probably the regular parking gets a little bit more use, and it pushes the cars off to the side of the park and leaves a little more between space?
I'm here to ask you what your ideas are, I don't know, but.
I don't know, no, it's flipping.
I still think, well, I'd like having handicap as close as possible.
But it'd just be here.
I know, you're right.
From here to there.
I see, I don't know what to, I, they're not drawing in on this map, so I can't really physically tell.
Right, but basically, I'm just basically flipping it, and it'd be closer to the path.
Well, there'd be a little walkway from here going over to the dock area and the whole path area, and also there'd be an opening here, since you're thinking about pavement here now, you put a little opening here to go in here, too.
For the other parking.
Yeah, for the other parking.
So can, is it hard for Ryan to give us a drawing with two to three spaces up there?
Up here?
No.
Or up somewhere?
Where he's proposing.
What you're proposing, yeah, to get the actual drawing.
No, I can tell him that.
Yeah, could you float us a new document, and then we can just review, and we could move forward that way?
Yeah.
And I also have a really funny question. I was looking at the old master plan, which Pat provided to us, and one of the comments was, there should be a connection, an easier way to get to the park, like from South Street, and there was a couple of recommendations, but it's all, it's no way to do it, it's all private property, and it's all.
Yeah.
That's from 1993.
1993, right, it was, it said, it'd be really nice if there was a connection to the south.
The sidewalk.
Get easements from everybody's property.
Right, walk down there, because it would just be so much nicer to get there.
It's great when it's frozen.
Yeah, it is.
Trustee Trout.
Yes.
Where is the dam in relationship to the?
Yeah.
The dam is over here.
Just so that I can from get.
Here's the lake, the dam is about right here.
Okay, just so I can get, like, my bearings on.
Yeah, this is the road coming up. The fence here now already goes around, this is all, and that's what he's also said, most, some of this work has already been done by our highway department.
But it's just gravel right now.
Well, yeah. It was grassier, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't tell now in the wintertime.
Grassish.
Yeah, of course, there's no path in there right now.
No. All right, I, I think, I'd like to be able to move forward so we can get this done, but I would like to see a finalized drawing of what he's proposing.
Tell them to do a finalized drawing with the extra pavement here.
Yeah. If you could get that to us as soon as possible, then we can move forward.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I'll leave that there for now. Okay.
Do you have a question?
I have a question about the dock, Tommy.
Yes.
The way I understood it once before, it was described as just a flat dock floating out there, no railing around it, was the safety issues of some young child falling off of that?
I don't know about what the dock's going to look like, because he hasn't provided any examples of it. I don't know if they come with railings, or sometimes they come with gates.
It does say ADA-approved dock.
That would be my only concern, is that we're going to get kids out there, some are going to fall in, and then.
Oh, yeah. Right.
Or even, you know, the whole point of this was handicap access, I don't know if I see someone in a wheelchair going out on a dock, that's weird.
Right.
I have one question, actually.
Yes.
I'm looking at this.
I'm writing these down, I'm going to ask them questions.
Okay, actually, when it comes time to pull the dock in and out, is this configuration conducive to being able to access? Looks like there's a plant there, there's some shrubberies and stuff.
Well, speak for Howie, though, we don't know what the dock is yet.
Right, no, no, but.
It may be a fixed dock.
You know what, originally, I thought it was going to be a fixed dock.
Yeah.
As, I wasn't involved with this when they developed this.
Okay.
Yeah, so we don't, we, that's an unknown, which they have to figure out.
I always thought it would be a fixed dock, but I was kind of surprised.
Me, too, because I, the ups and downs and floating and.
Right.
You know, wheelchair access and all the other kinds of stuff.
I thought from the original plan, it almost looked like a, like a deck.
Yeah, that's the picture that I saw originally, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, good question.
Right, but it's got, but it's got to be ice, it's got to be able to stand the ice.
Yes, absolutely.
Tracks. No, no, but the footings.
Okay.
You know, like, yeah.
Yeah, I'll push for a fixed dock.
Any other questions?
No, I like it.
So you'll get some to us, and then we can.
Yes, 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 I'll call them tomorrow.
All right. Grant committee.
Mayor and board, I'm just going to focus on one area, and that's to talk about what's known as the consolidated form application. Bottom line is that every year since 2011, Governor Cuomo has been able to get approval into the budget for $750 million in what I will characterize as big-ticket grant items. The filing window every year seems to be around May 1st, ends pretty quickly, July 28th, that's really not a lot of time, and the money, it's very competitive, this eight, 750, 800 million dollars, which by the way just got approved in this year's state budget, is divided across 10 regions in the state, and each region is an economic development region, region of economic development. Obviously, we're in the Mid-Hudson region, and you compete with other municipalities for money within your region, and the regions compete with each other, and whoever gets the most winning bids gets an extra $10 million in their region. So there's reasons that you compete with each other, and there's reasons why you collaborate with each other. So we haven't participated, other than the grant that Brent received last year.
That was a regional economic development council award for the low-lift pump station.
That's correct, that's right.
That was part of that process that we submitted and went through and got awarded.
Right.
And I was there for that.
Yeah, and that, that's the one, $32,000, that, which is great, but that's the only one that I can historically find anything on. That, there's nothing wrong with that, but we don't want to, in my mind, we don't want to miss the opportunity again, which is why, two things, one, I'm ratcheting up more people on my committee, I'm interviewing two more candidates this coming Thursday, I've already added the gentleman that we approved, and I've been working closely with Brent, because we do know that the waterline project, we're seeking funds from a different source of money, New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, and we want to pursue that source of funding again, but we could also make a case that this warrants an application through the economic development. The best example I can give you is if you've gone up and down Route 9, and I know everybody does, in Hyde Park, there was a big construction project going on, some of you already know this, that was to, that was largely funded, 50% of it, by this grant, and.
Well, their proposed new septic.
That's correct.
雨水的 approval was also approved through the regional economic development.
Absolutely correct, that's right.
Last year, right.
And you could say, well, what does that got to do with economic development? Well, actually, there's lots of restaurants and other types of businesses that want to come to Route 9 in Hyde Park, but they can't until a sewer system was put in. So I think there's a similar type of case to be made on our behalf, that water is pretty vital to economic development, and ongoing economic development, so we come at this from two different angles, but that, but the other thing I want to mention is that we're permitted to do more than one application. So we want to do at least two, and if we could squeeze in three, but at least two, this one involving the water main, the water line, is it possible that we can win two grants? But maybe, but we certainly would be happy to get one, but then we should pursue another project, and the way to think about this is, if we're successful, we have someone that can come up with 50% of the funds, so it's a 50% contribution. If there's some fairly large-scale project that we want to think about, we should, we should pursue it. If it's a project where we find ourselves saying, if only someone else would give us half the money, and we tie it somehow to economic development. I did leave in the cloud the section of all the awards that were announced only a few months ago for people that were applying last year this time, and it's just those projects in Hudson Valley, 133 winning projects, $83 million across all 133, to give you guys, the board, some ideas, you know, this is something we should think about, but the timeline on this is tight, it seems like there's a lot of time, this is a very, this is probably the most complex application that we would be undertaking, but we would give it a shot. We did $32,000 last year, we could potentially do much significantly higher than that.
May 1st, right?
May 1st is the most likely start of the filing window with the end of July.
Right, July 28th.
That's just not a lot of time, you know, 90 days for a very complex application. There are going to be workshops, which I plan on attending, I've already met with the folks in the Hudson Valley that oversee this, to get, you know, just develop, cultivate some relationships, terrific people, I've obviously invited them to come visit us in the village, but we, you know, we're going to be competing, and we want to be thinking about at least two projects.
You know, Kingston got sidewalk restoration and bike paths and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, they did.
At one of them, the city of Kingston. I really believe that my pet concern here is the condition of our sidewalks, which I, well, the reason why I've asked trustee Luit to continue to carry the banner for our sidewalk campaign, but if we could pursue money, not for, not only the development of new sidewalk, but for restoration of sidewalk, and to restore it back to what its original state was, which was the blue stone sidewalks that existed here, that would be, you know, a win for everybody.
Yes, and again, it's got to be tied to economic development.
Yeah, well, but isn't having a walkable community economic development?
If we get more people to walk and, you know.
Yeah.
Visit our businesses and our downtown, yes, yeah, so.
So the, you know, there is a sidewalk plan that was generated from the sidewalk study that, you know, Terry Gibson was taking the lead on, and it was really well done. You know, John Worth and Clara were, Clara Sauer were involved in that.
Well, that's where the ADA, we adapted, we supplied that grant for the ADA crosswalk, which we didn't get, which could be part of all of that as well. Maybe that would be the one we want to submit. It's shovel-ready, it's engineered, ready to go.
That's, that's what we're looking for, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so give thought, I can think of four better resources than you gentlemen, and we'll certainly give it a shot, we'll give it a try.
So all the work of engineering is, that has been done on the water project, we could use that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Go two avenues.
For the drawings, and then he can take those.
Right, so that kind of shovel-ready.
Howie, absolutely correct, and that's why Brent has quickly orchestrated this meeting with these engineers, and Brent actually arranged for me to speak to them, and, you know, they said, yeah, you know, we never, they actually said, we never really thought about this, if we make the case for economic development, while we make the case for technology infrastructure upgrades, so.
Let's try to, let's convene something and try to get something forward.
Take a look at.
We have nothing to lose.
Absolutely right.
Nothing to lose.
Absolutely correct, yeah, and an awful lot to gain, and if we don't, somebody else will.
Parking sidewalk plan.
That's it.
I was going to say parking garage, but we're not shovel-ready on a parking garage.
Yeah, I don't know.
How about on a parking plan? How about a gold ride parking plan?
We don't have a location yet.
Yeah.
I just wanted, speaking of parking, I wanted to go back to the Thompson Mazzarella Park, I wasn't done with my park committees.
Oh.
So anyway, you know, I let, they, we had our meeting last month, you were there, John, for part of it, so they're not in favor of putting a parking lot up there in the front of the park, I think you saw the emails, just wanted to.
And so I had a conversation with Sally Mazzarella. And so I had a conversation with Sally Mazzarella.
Okay.
On this specifically, I met with her, although she's, I want to give you the reason for why they're saying what they did. The parking, which is in Phase 3 parking, and there's a community center proposed for that spot, and the parking that is proposed for that community center, she would like to have dedicated to that parking. She's, not that she's not in favor of parking, what her concern is, is once you develop parking, and you have municipal parking, right, then it never becomes dedicated for the building. So there's, it's really, you can't just say, Howie, she's not in favor, because, again...
You saw the emails.
I saw Bob Ellsworth's emails, and I spoke directly to Sally Mazzarella.
Right, okay.
And I am telling you exactly what Sally said, that her issue is, once you turn it over to municipal, you no longer have dedicated parking space for that building, again. But she also said she was open and willing to go through the process and talk about this. So, to me, that's saying, there's an avenue for discussion, and we need to follow the process, no matter what we do, to have that discussion. So I reached out to the park committee and had this discussion, and, which was Sally at the, Sally at the head of it, because she was, in the emails was pointing to the person who said what was said, and I'm giving you feedback that she is open to participating in the discussion. But her reason is not saying, I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor because, I want to make that very clear to everybody, of why she's not in favor. So, it's a process, and we need to follow the process. We would involve the park committee in that process if we want to pursue doing something as an interim in that basis, and we would work, and we would work through that process. We need to work with the town, the town is the lead agency, we can't bypass any of the steps. And so that's what we will do. And they were open to that.
Okay.
One question happened, you can't, once you have a parking lot, you can't restrict who's going to park in it? You're still municipal parking, that's a parking lot, right? I could park at the library and walk into town.
I know, I understand, but it's.
I understand that concern, right.
All village, and I agree with Sally Mazzarella on this, is that all villages and towns have this problem, we're not unique in not having a problem, and all villages and towns are trying to reach outside the boundary of the village to expand parking in any area they can. So she recognizes our desire for wanting to do this, right, but she's representing the park in trying to do it. And we just, we got to, we have to follow due process, and that's what we'll do, and that's what we told Bob Ellsworth, who fired off the original email, that we would not do anything without following due process, and getting the principal stakeholders engaged and pursuing forward, and everybody said, good. So that's what we'll do.
And I'd like to say that, for the record, Mr. Mayor, you had approached me, knowing that we're in the community garden, and said, listen, you know, that's a constituency that has to be engaged in this conversation as well.
No. We're not there yet.
What's the next move?
The next move is to work on the one here first, because we can't do it in parallel. And if we have an opportunity, then we'll proceed with going through the process of getting a process started for looking at other alternative parking.
Oh, wait, I'm not talking about the E.G. parking, I'm talking about the discussion, no, the discussion, where is the discussion with the parks committee going from here?
Okay, so.
Is it tabled for now, or is it?
No, I think it's ongoing. Trustee Trout is looking at loading zones, which I apologize, we couldn't make last, I could not make last week, but we're looking at loading zones, and I've also reached out to other organizations within the community to talk about parking. And so, right now, we're in the exploratory phase of looking at possibilities, and trying to pursue all avenues right now, in terms of doing parking, whether it be Thompson Mazzarella Park, or some other organization, or development within the village.
Okay.
Okay, so, I believe that we're moving forward, we're not reading formally, but we're really driving to, you know, put a lot of facts and figures on, you know, get some information together that we can have a discussion. So I think that's what's important, getting information.
This is the parking subcommittee, not the park committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have to get together and try to get those loading zones, we have to get P.
I apologize, I was disposed last week.
No, that's okay, I understand.
Okay, we've got a Veterans Committee, but as planned, that will not be a meeting till after Memorial Day, and then we'll convene that. All right, special requests, peddler's permits. Pat, do we have any?
We have, I want to put them all under, NiPerg wants to go door-to-door.
Yeah, I don't have it, my file is empty, it doesn't hold it.
April 30th and August 31st.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, it was what again?
New York Public Interest Research Group, NiPerg.
And they want to go door-to-door.
Oh, here it is. It's in special events and requests.
Well, this is peddling, so that would be first, and actually, I think that they're exempt because they're in New York. But it would be from April 30th to August 31st. They come every year, and I remember there was a whole process last time.
It's the entire time, or is it just those two days?
They're between a brief period between April 30th and August 31st. They're exempt from filling out the form, they're exempt from a lot of.
I see that it gets coming around every year. So what do we need to do?
Both approve, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Let me say, I'd make a motion to approve. I went loud enough the first time.
Second?
Is there any way we can, like, restrict him to a month at least, instead of, what, five months?
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
It goes from April to August, so that's a long time.
I just.
The activities go between the hours of 4:00 and 9:00 at night.
The way I think I've seen this thing work in the past is, they're here for like a weekend, I think they just don't know.
Yeah, I thought it was like, just these two days.
But I don't, they're not going to be here all summer, I think they just, they don't know when they're coming.
Don't want the same people coming to my house all the time.
They won't need to come at more than once.
No, I think they canvass the village once, and that's it.
Well, that doesn't say that, it says April to August.
Yeah, that's the period of time which they're running the campaign. When they're going to be here, we don't really know for sure.
Right, we don't know the exact dates.
So what do you want me to do?
They don't waste, you know, their time, it's just, they're doing research.
I would, I would approve that, and I think I've seen this in action, basically.
They've been coming every year, how often have they been coming to your house?
If you're not home, they keep coming back.
Do they?
How do you know if you're not home?
Because they leave things at my door. I don't care, it doesn't matter, they don't bother me, I'm just saying. It seems like a long period of time.
Yeah, it does.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried, thank you. That's the only peddler permit?
Yep, all the rest of activities.
Can you go through the special, do you have this special request, Pat? Or do you have a hard copy, or do you want me to?
Okay, no, I can, I have the hard copies right here. They might not be in order, is what they are on the agenda. Primrose Hill Schools requesting a fabric banner to hang pre-standing about eight-foot by five-foot at the end of Springbrook Park near the school's sign, double-sided, and it would be from Saturday, May 5th to Sunday, May 6th. And I sent the request to John Fenton and the police and fire, and John Fenton's response was, with respect to Primrose, the banner is permitted, but can only be limited to 20 square feet in total, any dimension, two-foot by 10-foot, four-by-five. The banner that they are proposing, eight-foot by five-foot, 40 square feet, is not allowed. So I sent that response back to Primrose, and I have not heard back.
Okay. So I guess we can't act until we know what we're, what up?
We could approve the maximum size.
You can approve it based upon John Fenton's recommendations.
Yes, okay. I make a motion, we approve based on the recommendation.
Second?
What's the banner for?
It is for...
Didn't say.
No, oh, the Spring Fair. They have that, a Spring Fair.
Spring Fair, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried.
Next one, Lions Club. Sean Kemp submitted it as president. We took place, set up a coin drop location in front of M&amp;T Bank and stickers. And that was sent out as well.
On May 4th and May 5th.
May 4th and 5th.
And everybody's approved, all the signatures are approved?
Yeah, I haven't heard back, I didn't hear anything negative on them.
Okay. I make a motion to, I make a motion to approve the Lions Coin Drop?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Very good, thank you. Next, Pat.
Dutchess County Agricultural Society, the Board of Directors of Dutchess County Agricultural Society respectfully submits the dates to close Mulberry Street North from Platt Avenue for the following events and days. Thursday, May 3rd through Tuesday, May 8th for the Antique Car Show. Thursday, June 7th through Monday, June 11th for the Good Guys Ride and Custom Car Show. Tuesday, August 14th through, Tuesday, August 28th for the Dutchess County Fair. Signs will be posted prior to closing information, informing, sorry, the public of street closure. I have enclosed a copy of our schedule for the 2018 season to date, if there's anything that goes on. And that was also sent to.
And approved, everybody's approved. My only comment on this is that if we could sometimes get help of putting up the signs, do you think that would be possible? The road, the road signs, the highway department does that all the time, and then it goes back.
Pete has some concerns about the fair closing, that he'd like to discuss, but that's all he said. He didn't give me details.
The amount of days of the fair.
I don't know.
Well, they work with him with the security meetings, right?
So, that'll all be looked at, he will look that through the security. So I make, I make the motion to approve, but I would like to see if we could get some additional help in some way.
I just want to.
Can we do that with our highway department? Can we, can we, or not, just the highway department? Would be restricted to have the highway department be the only ones that can do it.
To put up the signage?
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that. All right, let's make it, I'll pursue this on the side, I still make a motion to approve, as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried, thank you.
Northern Duchess Hospital Foundation, Taste of Rhinebeck, and that's coming up next Tuesday, April 17th, and Pete had no issues with the Taste of Rhinebeck.
I move that we approve that as presented.
Second?
If you buy tickets, you have to abstain?
No, thanks.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried.
The Amsterdam Restaurant, 6380 Mill Street, for the tasting table at the Amsterdam, presented by BMW. It's a 100-person invitation event from Tasting Table and BMW to share a night of culinary discovery and cooking demonstrations, guest education with Chef Alex Berger, test drives of new BMW vehicles supported by BMW product professionals. The event date is Wednesday, April 18th, from 4:30 to 5:30. There, Pete has no issues with the Amsterdam event either.
I make a motion to approve.
So, okay, what is the event?
Pardon?
A 100-person invitation, is this inside the Amsterdam?
That's what I presumed, but it wasn't clear.
Oh, location, the Amsterdam Restaurant, yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried, thank you. Next?
And, okay, there was a proclamation that was for Municipal Clerks Week, May 7th through the 13th.
Do you want to read it, or did you just want to refer to it?
I don't feel comfortable.
I would happily to read this proclamation, because our clerks do not get enough recognition for all that they do for villages. So, "In proclamation of Municipal Clerks Week dated May 7th to the 13th of 2018," correction, this says 2017, "whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of our local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides professional link between our citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality in rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, quote, village clerk. Now therefore, I Gary Bassett, Mayor of the Village of Rhinebeck, do recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend our appreciation to our village clerk, municipal clerk Patricia Kuhn, and to all of the municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent." Dated, you know, for the approval on May 2018, signed by myself.
On behalf of all the clerks here, planning, zoning, deputy clerk, treasurer, and court clerk, thank you.
All the clerks, yes, job well done by all.
Thank you, he's right.
I mean, the, I just, if you're here during the day, and you see how they communicate to our public, and, you know, in the everyday manner, it's just exemplary, so, we're blessed to have such a vibe of staff and people working for us.
I used to deal with the clerks in Chicago, and it's just not the same thing.
Is that a good thing?
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Do you miss them, or what?
Kat, may I please just readdress the NiPerg application? Pete did have, I have no problems with NiPerg, as long as they supply an employee list and copies of photo IDs, as they usually do. So I'm going to put that in there.
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Very good. Other business. Yeah, so this is, we'll get you, let me just take care of this first. I want to just give an update on the handicap access. As everybody knows, our handicap access lift has been in disrepair for several weeks, it was finally repaired Friday?
Yesterday.
Oh, excuse me, yesterday, Monday. And is now operational again, so, again, our handicap access is operational. But during the process of this investigation, when it broke down, there are several motors that are used for this device that are now in short supply, and there's, in this case, there was four motors in the country that we had access to, to be able to get to repair this station. So it is substantially outdated in terms of its operation. We requested to keep the motor, because we're going to send the motor out to get it repaired ourselves, we are supposed to receive that motor back, they did take it, but they're going to send it to us, so that we do have a backup here for ourselves, in case the world supply is done. But I want to make it known that we are pursuing other alternatives to change out the handicap access that we have, and we have now are soliciting bids to get a handicap access lift, power lift, installed in the entryway downstairs, that will facilitate first floor to second floor, and elevated chair rather than a chair that goes around. We've had engineering here to visit it, and engineering is working with the bids that we have to come up with a plan, and then we will present that to the board for approval once we have all the documentation. But it'll, everybody that's looked at it so far has been in favor of going for this platform lift station, is really what it is, that would be tucked into the corner, if you know where our water fountain is today, we would remove the water fountain, we have to have a water station. We may replace that with, like we have with the other water, non-electric water stations, and put that still out there, which we could still do, but it would go into that corner and rise up and come out onto the second floor. So you would enter in, as you come in the door, you would enter into the lift, you would rise up to the second floor, and you would back out and then work, and then have access into the build, into the, into the second floor. It does cause a little bit of a restriction if there are large crowds and have to exit, because they have to walk around the lift station, as it would protrude, but engineering needs to be involved, because we have a platform out there that we have to basically cut through to be able to install it. So, more to come, but I believe this would be a substantial improvement to our handicap access, and not have to rely on the, seems like, constant repair of the lift station that we're working with now, and it's a device that's easy and simple to operate. Okay? More to come on that. Now, I think trustee Lewitt wants to talk about.
So, last year, I became involved with the Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium, which was involved in bringing together 18 different communities in our region to solicit bids for the changeover of the street, illumination streetlights, to LED streetlights. Village Redhook, yes, Village Redhook, excuse me, Town of Redhook was spearheading the process. I got three bids back, all bids were deemed technically deficient, so that didn't, that didn't work, that was about at the end of last year. So, that group, they talked to the bidders and such, and in that time, the New York Power Authority basically came through, and... And working with the Power Authority, they've put together a program to help municipalities do the conversion of their streetlights to LED streetlights. They got a big bid with Phillips, who's kind of the major player in this lighting. They got an engineering firm. So basically, they created a one-stop shop for us. There's still some details to be worked out, but one of the first things that needs to happen is we need to ask Central Hudson for a price for our village lighting system. The way it works right now is we rent the lights and the armatures. We pay a monthly fee and we pay for the electricity. The first step in this process is to purchase them, purchase the lights and the armatures, so that we can then replace them with what we want. So we have, we have to ask something, to ask Central Hudson, well, how much do you want for them? Central Hudson, of course, have been jacking this rate up. It's like doubled in the last two years. We're not under any obligation to do so, but I'd like to get the board's approval at least to put the paperwork in to get Central Hudson to give us their, their, their price. And that may be also a negotiable price. And I'll just add.
We're just going to throw them away, right?
Yeah, they get recycled. And actually, there's some LEDs around the, around the.
Oh, there are some LEDs.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing is that there are, they did point out, if we work in concert with the town, there are some grants to do this as a shared municipal service, so we can actually get some money from the state to help offset some of the costs that will be associated. It looks like a really pretty good program. Payouts are on the order of about five years, it seems like. They even have a finance program that they put together, basically that's geared to the payout time. So if it's going to take six years to pay out, then you get to finance it for six years. So there's a fair amount, lot here, but we just need to get this started. I will, when there's more to come, I'll bring it forward. It's pretty complex.
We still get the engineering study done on how lights get included and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, actually, I spoke to the, the Power Authority representative, and he basically said for Rhinebeck and for the Rhinebecs, that they would come out and do it for us.
Very good.
Yeah, he said, he said like, 200 lights, sure, we'll do it. If you're a bigger municipality, for, you know, like Huntington, Long Island, and you've got, you know, 7,000, then they don't do that. But for us, they would come out and do the engineering.
Very good.
Which is nice, yeah.
It's really good.
So, yeah.
Just a quick question. Do we rent the poles too? Do we pay rent on the poles?
Do we pay rent on the poles?
So once we have purchased the arbiter and lighting?
Oh, is there an attachment fee? Yes.
Yeah.
So that is actually currently being litigated.
Okay.
So right now, of course, the utility companies want to, want to charge an attachment fee. They have in the past. However, there are some, I think it's Orange or Rockland, I can't remember, who are involved in trying to get those, get those fees wiped away. And all of this winds up coming through, through the Public Service Commission, so fair amount there.
Yeah, the reason I brought this up is in a recent discussion, we found a document that says the Village of Rhinebeck in 1931 transferred all of the poles to Central Hudson. So we used to own the poles. We transferred them into the utility company.
Right.
Right? So we have some vested rights on those poles, which is being investigated now in terms of the legal standpoint. Because the school, the Rhinebeck Central School District wants to run fiber from the high school to the elementary school. And part of that requires going down Arnett and up Knollwood to run their dedicated fiber. And we're dealing with this issue about owner, you know, if we have space on the poles that we could then dedicate to them. So Central Hudson has said, no problem. Frontier has said, no, you can't do it. Because Central Hudson has said Frontier is co-owner, but in the process of the discussion, there was a question is, we know we pay for rent on the lights, but do we also, are we still paying some sort of fee for the pole? All right, and if we do, we need to.
I have not, I've seen a bill for the lights and the electricity. I've never seen a bill for the poles. Never seen a bill for the pole.
All right.
I think, just like, this little tidbit I picked up, I don't know if you've noticed, there's a bunch of places where one utility pole has replaced another, and the first one, this one gets sawed off, and then it sits there for a while. So apparently, New York State law is whoever the last person to, to, to take their stuff off the pole has to pay for the pole removal.
Wow.
So what happens is, it doesn't happen. And somebody said, I heard there were some techniques for municipalities basically to force, force the sort of duplicate poles to be.
We have several places.
We have a bunch of them around the village.
There's one right in the village, right?
Yeah, so I was, I was going to look into what the, what's, what's behind that because I've noticed there's been a rash of them lately.
Right. So just for the board to aware, so we're still pursuing from, you know, legally, can we work? Because apparently, we have rights to the poles. We have a communication gap on that pole that we may have a right to, but we have to go through the legal process to see if we can dedicate that space for communications, which includes a whole list of things. And then if we can also then use that for the purpose of facilitating a school to run dedicated fiber from school to school. On 24 poles that, that span, that would be limited to that. So I just want to make the board aware that this whole issue with poles and everything is.
I'd like to know what's happening.
I'll keep you all informed.
So, but we gave them, we gave them to Central Hudson. They're not ours anymore.
That, according to the original document, we owned them and we, and we transferred the pole. I'll send the document to you, to everybody on the board that we received just recently.
Is that franchise agreement?
The franchise agreement that I found, I think you found it, right? That transfers the rights of all the poles to the utility company.
Right. Just didn't anticipate any of this stuff.
No, it was 1930, it was 1931.
Right.
Yeah. By the village board. Okay. All right, minutes approval. I'd like to make a motion to approve the short-term vacation workshop minutes of 3:15, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd, 2018.
Second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, correspondence back.
Do you want me to read them all?
I only have two. No, wait, I'm sorry, no, you have more than that. I'm sorry, I'm looking in the second, but yes.
Is there a reader's digest version?
Can there be, can there be some?
Parkinson's Disease Support Group, Dear Mr. Bassett, on behalf of those in the Village of Rhinebeck and throughout the Mid Hudson Valley who are living with Parkinson's disease, or who care for or love someone with Parkinson's, I thank you for once again proclaiming April as Parkinson's Awareness Month in the Village of Rhinebeck. As April million, this April, millions of people from around the world will recognize April as Parkinson's Awareness Month. The Village of Rhinebeck joins New York State and a growing number of Mid Hudson Valley cities and towns who are also taking this positive educational step to raise awareness. Sadly, there is no known cure nor any way to slow the progression of this devastating disease. Educational actions like yours help to underscore the urgency for aggressive research. In addition to those in our own community living with Parkinson's, nearly 1 million other Americans are living with Parkinson's. Approximately 60,000 or more Americans are diagnosed with Parkinson's every year, and this number does not reflect the thousands of cases that go undetected. In fact, the number of people with Parkinson's is predicted to double by 2040. All of these people, their caregivers and families are waiting for a cure. Thank you again for joining this year's campaign. Warmest regards, Nancy Redkey, Chair, Parkinson's Disease Support Group. Duchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Bassett. Dear Municipal Agency or Public Safety Agency, this letter is to notify that your agency of a scheduled event that may produce crowds in excess of 5,000 patrons on property at any given time, hence the statement of notice. The 27th Annual Hudson Valley Hot Air Balloon Festival on July 6, 7, and 8 will be located at the Duchess County Fairgrounds, 6550 Spring Brook Avenue, Rhinebeck. We have notified the following agencies and municipalities, the Village of Rhinebeck, Mid Hudson Regional Hospital, Bassett Brothers Medical Center, Northern Dutchess Hospital, Putnam Hospital, the Duchess County Department of Health, Rhinebeck Fire Department, Rhine Cliff Volunteer Fire Department, West Clinton Fire District Company 2, Statsburg Fire Department, Hillside Fire Department, Duchess County Department of Emergency Response, Duchess County Sheriff's Department, and the New York State Troopers. We are working with the above agencies to ensure that all traffic flows smoothly and to enable all necessary emergency measures for public safety have been addressed. Parking on-site will accommodate up to 15,000 vehicles. At times, traffic control may be necessary and will be provided by the Duchess County Sheriff's Department led by the Sheriff's Lieutenant, Robert Monaco. The tentative weekend schedule is enclosed. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact Frank Costella, Jr., President and CEO of the Duchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce. And I have posted downstairs in our lobby the tentative schedule. And it's also on the list. It's a two-page thing.
Now, why are they not filling out the events code application?
It's at the fairgrounds.
Well, I understand.
And it's also in the town.
But why don't we have the fairgrounds fill out the events code application?
I think it's going to be launched in the town.
Oh, okay. But.
The fair doesn't fill out.
I know, but why? I mean, you know, we have people that have wheelchair ramps and have to pay building permit fees. Why is the fairgrounds exempt from the events code? They're not.
I think they're a special fairground.
They're under the state code, aren't they?
Well, they are, but we have an events code. That was the whole thing. We should, they should at least bring their calendar in front of us and we can, you know, find out what they're doing. I mean.
They had, when they gave us this, the road closure, they did give us the.
Yeah, we did that last month. We read off all the dates for their events.
I mean, this is more detailed, you know? They're talking about how many folks are going to be there, helicopter rides, balloon rides. This thing is more detailed than what we're seeing from the, I mean, we already know what Good Guys is, but why don't they just bring the calendar in front of us?
Well, I think they did. I thought we approved the calendar.
They don't give us as much detail as the Porch Fest. I don't understand that. That wasn't the intent when we passed the events code. It wasn't, but we, we expected them to come in and take their calendar in front of us and get approval for stuff. Just they're giving us no information.
Do you want?
Yeah, do you want more?
I just think.
You can ask for more.
We should just go clerk to clerk, you know? Maybe you should ask them to give us.
I mean, I already have a copy of their whole schedule because they gave that to me with the fairgrounds road closure.
All right. I guess if, if the calendar doesn't change, we know, you know, what's going to happen. Because like Good Guys, we know what Good Guys is. Although they had an illegal sign last year that was as big as my house. It was facing the road. I don't know, let's just, it's late. Let's, let's bring it up again later.
I'd like to read what the event discouraging.
Okay, keep reading. An email from Bob Ellsworth. Do you want me to read?
Which one was this?
Our committee is very upset about.
No, we discussed this one.
Duchess County Sheriff's Office, Mayor, this was given to the previous, it has the wrong mayor's name. In light of recent events concerning violence, in particular the school shooting tragedy in Florida, I'm writing to reassure you that the Duchess County Sheriff's Office is fully trained and prepared for any situation that may occur. Our men and women are highly trained to confront and deal with any threat or situation, and rest assured that the safety of you and those around you is our top priority. If you need anything at all and would like to discuss any further ways in which we can assist you, please feel free to contact us. Thank you for everything that you do, and we look forward to continuing to work closely with you in the future. Francois Weigel, My Christmas Wish List. Dear Mayor Bassett, one item on my Christmas wish list is important to me and may be helpful for others. My wish is for a crosswalk across East Market Street at the intersection of Center Street. As I grow older, I realize how difficult it can be for seniors to cross East Market Street. Many folks park on the west side of the northern portion of Center Street or in the parking lot and then need to cross East Market Street to get to either the village or town hall. During winter months, many folks cross to get to the farmer's market and the town hall. I'm not sure that there is a bit of bureaucracy involved as East Market Street is a state highway, which may make it just not worth the grief. But I would appreciate your giving us some thought. Sincerely, Francois Weigel.
Please tell Francois that it is very high on our list to figure out how to do better crosswalks within the village.
We received a letter from Meals on Wheels, and it was, of course, it's, it's available, they're looking for. They designated the week of March 19th as Champions Week. They start out, they discuss how they start out approximately 11:15 from our kitchen located in Hyde Park, United Methodist Church on Route 9, and then return an hour. It's a day, it's already passed. But if anybody's interested in Meals on Wheels, there are things downstairs in the village hall on the bulletin board. If you're in need of it, because we are serviced by the Meals on Wheels from Hyde Park. Julie Anne Benroth, she's from Copake. It was a letter regarding the POW MIA flag. Can we read it? We've already addressed.
I think we've addressed it.
Same thing. That one, Village Board, hello, my name is Stephen Crocey, and I live at 15 Claus Drive. I assume you are very familiar with this stretch between South Barsonage and Route 9. For reasons unknown to myself, there are quite a few speeding cars on that road in both directions. I have a daughter with special needs. She has Down Syndrome. These speeding vehicles pose a definite risk to her. Would it be possible to have a speed bump put down or some signage? I appreciate your time and attention. Stephen Crocey, 15 Claus Drive. And the ones that are regarding, I'll send that to Pete.
Yes.
Dear Mayor Bassett and Board Members, the Village Highway Department, removal of a large branch. After a recent third, recent snowstorm, a branch which was at least 35 foot long fell from the street, tree number 42, in front of my house at 104 East Market Street. Though the branch landed against a window plane, it fortunately did not cause any serious damage. And before I had time to ask, our village crew, highway crew arrived, chopped up the limb, and disposed of it. Though I know that our highway department, under the stewardship of Mike Wolfe, always does an excellent job, this task went considerably above and beyond their duties, so I wish to commend them with this letter. Public safety concerns also compel me to draw your attention to the fact that about half a dozen branches, each exceeding one foot in length, fall each year from both street trees number 42 and 43 in front of my property. Norway maples have shallow root systems, so such losses are steadily decreasing the stability of these mature street trees which are marked for removal for the Village Tree Committee and the Central Hudson Arborist for removal in the January 2016 at the cost of $60 per tree. I have written to the board before. The verbal approval for removal that was given to me by the mayor at that time was revoked without notification. I therefore urge the village board again to have these street trees removed at the village's expense before they cause significant damage to the public property or both for which the village could then be held liable. Sincerely, Isabel Schulte. And she included a picture. And now that I received the letter, that's now prior notice.
Right, so has this been given to the tree commission to evaluate?
She just came in yesterday with it, so.
I would recommend that we give this, we put a lot of trust and confidence in our tree commission to evaluate, and if it's a safety concern for our DPW to address it as well, and then we can make a informed opinion on the tree.
Okay. We're getting towards the end. We received a notification from the New York State Department of Public Service regarding the March 2018 winter storms and related outages. In March 2018, two severe snowstorms swept through parts of New York State causing widespread power outages. The New York State Public Service is investigating preparedness and responses of all seven major electric utility companies in New York, Central Hudson, Consolidated Ed, NYMO, doing business as National Grid, New York State Gas and Electric, and Orange and Rockland Utilities, and PSEG on Long Island, and Rochester Gas and Electric regarding these power outages. The bulk of the power outages occurred in counties located in downstate. They're holding public, public statement hearings, and there's a list of them. The one that's closest to us is on Monday, April 23rd, at the Poughkeepsie Town Hall, one over Rocker Road, Poughkeepsie. The afternoon hearing is at 2:00, the evening hearing is at 6:00. The rest are located in Athens, Maniola, Smithtown, Hudson, Poughkeepsie, Larchmont, Somers, Suffolk, Pound Ridge, White Plains, Monticello, and Carmel. If anybody's interested in the list, it is on our, it is included in our documents, and I have it. It's on file in my office. It's on file in my office. And to whom it may concern, at the village board. I live on Carolina Drive in the village of Reinbeck. The new development has created an extension of Will Trumper Drive. This is currently no stop, there is currently no stop sign at this intersection. I have noticed that people drive very fast down Will Trumper, and it's likely that an accident will happen sometime in the future. Please tell me how I proceed to request a stop sign at the intersection of Will Trumper and Carolina Drive. I would also appreciate it if we could get speed limits posted in the neighborhood. There are many children in Stortiniville, end quotes, and some people drive incredibly fast with no concern for safety. Thank you for your help. Finally, Kim Trout, 7th Carolina Drive.
So do we need, we don't need to do anything special to put up a speed sign, because all village streets are 30 mile per hour. So we could put up speed zone signs, is that correct?
So, on my side, we have the little kid, we have one of those little kid signs that shows that there's children running.
Yeah.
So it's, it's like a slow down kind of sign. So I don't know, they have it over there.
I don't see any. I went driving through there.
Yeah, because we should put one over there.
There's no speed signs within the development.
Yeah.
And we'll address the stop sign separately, but there's no speed signs, you know, that I think to report.
We should, we should consider that.
We should consider that.
Because there's little kids in our, in our neighborhood.
There are a lot.
Always have.
A lot. So first, I'd like to, you know, see if we can get some speed signs erected by a highway department, appropriate spots. And then in regard to the stop sign, the issue is Will Trumper Drive now has Will Trumper Drive Extension, which is not a village road yet. It still belongs to the subdivision, and it has not been turned over. So we pursued trying to say, can we amend the site plan to have a traffic component into it, just since the street has not been turned over to the village yet. And have a stop sign going north and south on Will Trumper Drive or Carolina Drive makes an intersection. And I hadn't followed up with John, but I know John met with the site planner today, and they were looking, looking at possibility. But in the meantime, we addressed this with legal to see, and also with our police department. And the recommendation out of police, out of both legal and, well, just legal predominantly, is that we really go through our village and town code and basically adopt a sign for, a stop sign for that, which means we need to go through the process of setting a public hearing, you know, for putting a stop sign at that location. And then if approved at the public hearing, we can, it gets added to our list, which is an enforcement list that our police maintains, and then we can install a stop sign. So, but to do that, we need to have a public hearing.
Yeah, and then we've always had like several other traffic issues we're considering at the same time, just so if we have any other traffic issues.
Well-
Load zones or whatever.
Is this an issue that we could address at our next monthly meeting and, and set a public hearing for review of that sign, of the stop sign?
Yeah, I mean, Pete should look into it.
Pete is.
Give us the recommendation.
Yep, Pete will. He's already been informed, and so we can get a recommendation at that time. And then I would like to make a motion that we set a public hearing at our next monthly meeting as for a stop sign on Will Trumper Drive at the intersection, Will Trumper Drive and Carolina.
I have a second and a question.
Second?
Second, okay. Who, I don't know if it's John Fenton, is anybody from a traffic engineering point, do you say, yes, you should have two stop signs here, it should be three stop signs? I don't know what the, I'm sure there are guidelines.
There are specific rules.
I'm sure.
Where it has to be placed and how it can be placed.
Right, whether it's a two-way stop or a three-way stop.
Yeah.
Who, who does that?
We'll get that out of our police department as well. But there are specific subguidelines, and that'll come out of the public, into the public hearing.
Okay.
So we don't have to wait to take over the road, then?
No, because according to legal, which I've, which I consulted with, it's already open to the public.
Okay.
So since it's open to the public, we can exercise on us immediately and don't have to wait till the transfer. Yeah. Which is good, because also I was worried about why maybe we should do the subdivision process, but it sounds like both, the right way to go is to have a public hearing on a stop sign, because that's what we've done with all stop signs in the past, so we should continue to follow that practice.
Yeah.
All right. Is everybody okay with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Very good. You'll communicate to Kim? Right, thank you.
And the last one.
Yeah, this.
Are you gonna communicate to Kim or what?
Yeah.
It was addressed to Pat.
I know. From Mike Mazzarella, I've often wondered when traveling from my house to the village, why there is one, there is a one-way street between Market and South Street. All it does is increase the traffic on Mulberry Street that has the church and the old school and the multiple activities and events, particularly on Sunday and holidays, making it prone to occurrences because of the increased traffic. Further, the caution light rather than prevent accidents is also prone to create problems. Drivers going east on South Street that are not familiar with the community assume the cars that are going south from Market are going to stop, assuming that there is a stop sign there. I've had that happen to me on several occasions. I'd like to suggest that it is time to reassess the advantage of the one-way street on South Parsonage. Present conditions do not warrant it. There is no longer a deli on Market and South Parsonage or a business with unusual traffic. A four-way stop on South Street would be more prudent and safer in the long run. Thank you for consideration. That came in this afternoon.
This has come up at least-
This is just always an issue.
Always an issue.
Yeah. Can I, I have a little history here. When the deli was there, there was always parking there, like-
There was angled parking.
Angled parking, so there wasn't room for, for a two-way street. So now that the deli isn't there anymore, we could-
Well, I got a question, though. If you do that, then people are gonna, people traveling north are gonna cut off, they're gonna get off at Kloss, go up Mulberry, cut over, they're gonna, basically they're not gonna go through the center of town. They're gonna go up, they're gonna cut over, go up Mulberry, cut over to-
Or create a bypass.
Yeah, create a bypass, yeah, basically. They come up Parsonage and then cut over to Mulberry and go through town that way. And also, if you have anybody, fair traffic coming up from the south, they're gonna go straight through there, right? They're gonna come up, they're gonna get, again, get up Kloss and go straight up that way.
You think that that's gonna create more traffic going that way?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Because think, think, think about if you're, right now, if you do your GPS, right, it routes you around that.
Oh, I wasn't thinking about GPS.
Right, no, no, right. No, no, it re-routes you around that. But if that's an open street, and you're coming from the south, GPS is gonna shoot you right through there. I think you're, I think-
To go to the fair.
To go to the fair, and maybe also just avoid-
People use it to bypass the center of town, and that's the issue. The other issue is, what I've been told, and I don't know if it's true or not, is that it was created because of school traffic coming in in the morning, and it was backing up onto Route 9 because they could not travel through that intersection.
That's what Mayor Rude would always say.
Is, is that, I don't know, is that where that came from?
I've never witnessed that phenomenon, but that's-
Well, that's because there's no stop sign there.
I think it's more because the deli was there, and there was a lot of parking there and-
Well, it took, should we investigate and see, make a, have a recommendation?
I think the gentleman makes a good case. The blinking light is confusing, and that is a, an area that we were hoping to be able to get sidewalks in.
Yeah.
Because of children walking to school. It is a, I don't wanna characterize it as a dangerous mix, but it could be a safer, and I think the safer approach would be a four-way stop sign.
I would look at a four-way stop sign, but I would not make, I would keep it one way.
It's too easy.
Yes.
Yeah.
It really is.
I don't wanna lose the blinking light.
I agree with Rick.
The historic blinking light, and the historic-
We can leave it there over the top.
We paid the electric for that.
If it's gonna be four-way stopped, then you have yellow, so on one side.
We'll cut our electric bill.
It would be red all the way around.
So what is the-
Let's talk to the police department, too.
Yeah, that's, I think we need to get some sort of traffic study to determine the effectiveness of changing it.
That's-
Right?
Yeah.
I don't know who it takes to do it. I don't know if our police does a traffic study or whatever, but I believe we need to have a traffic study, because I believe Trusty Lewitt's concern is valid that we create a bypass through the village and create more traffic in that intersection.
I agree with not changing the one-way aspect.
And that's, I mean, if you look around, I mean, there are all these communities all over the place where there's a main thoroughfare that gets, that gets traffic on it. And then now, but these GPS is traffic sensitive, right? So it routes people through local streets to get around traffic jams.
There was recently on TV a street in California where that exact situation happened.
Okay, yeah, so I, yeah, I could see that happening by GPS.
All right, so let's, let's get a study done, let's be official. Let's get a, let's get a study done and move forward, okay?
That's all.
Okay, so very good. Okay, that's it for the regular meeting. You said, Mr. Ross, you said you had an executive session?
We'd like to discuss the-
We need to have a subject matter, so to go into executive session, to make sure it's appropriate for executive session.
Well, it involves potential litigation.
Okay.
And specifically with the village.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to close the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. I'd like to make a motion now to close the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting for April 10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Thank you.